All right, good evening. Tonight is our regularly scheduled work session meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience's citizens' logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. Again, good evening and welcome to the work session meeting. We have a lengthy agenda today, and I know there's a lot of individuals in the audience, so I'd just like to give a preview of how we're going to run tonight's meeting. First, we have a series of proclamations to hand out to students in connection with our music program. We then have a presentation of a donation to the district, which we're going to allow after the proclamations. We then have presentations by Mr. Kennedy regarding a facilities use matter. We have a budget presentation by Mr. Skrocky, and we'll have board discussion on the budget. And then at the end of the meeting, as we typically do at work session meetings, we'll open the floor to any members of the public who would like to address the board. So with that said, and prior to starting the meeting, if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and with that, Dr. Dietrich, I'll turn it over to you for our proclamations. But before we do, today is Teacher Appreciation Day, so for any of the teachers that are in the audience or those that are tuning in, thank you on behalf of the board for all you do for our school district. We're so appreciative, and we're so fortunate to have such a great staff.
Thank you. This evening, as was mentioned, we do have proclamations, and we are doing it just a little bit differently tonight, given the number of students that we are recognizing. You will come up and receive the proclamation, then immediately move through and be congratulated by all members of the board and the administration. The first group we'd like to recognize this evening are students that are being recognized for their accomplishments as members of the 2018- 17-18 North Penn High School Men's Choir. They were invited to perform at the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association All-State Conference. And to do the introductions, we have Matt Clank, Director of North Penn High School's Men's Choir.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich, board members, for inviting us here tonight. It is my honor to present to you this year's North Penn High School Men's Choir. They were selected through an audition process by submitting recordings of last year's group to be an honored performer at this year's PMEA conference, which was held just a few weeks ago in Lancaster. Each year, schools from all across the Commonwealth can submit recordings, choral groups, orchestra groups, jazz groups, band groups, from all levels, and very few are invited to come and participate. PMEA likes to have the best of our music programs represented, and we were thrilled that the Men's Choir were chosen this year. So without anything further, I'd like to introduce these students to you. Partha Rora.
Hold on one second.
Oh, sure. Matthew Bartelms. Kieran Bates is unable to attend. Doug Bell. Andrew Bazelli. Noah Burgett. Chris Natchantaraugh. Charles Claffey. William Clark is unable to attend. Kevin Claxton. Jack Collins. Tyler Coyne. Jamin Crosby. Sure. Philip Crush is unable to attend. Jared Delabuono, who is unable to attend. Caleb Fia, who's unable to attend. Eru Shadi, who's unable to attend. Sean Hayes. Nick Yervalino. Sri Kharkata. Colin Kejo is unable to attend. Stephen Kandikian. Paul Klemmer. Chris Lee is unable to attend. Joshua Mayer is unable to attend. Manu Mathieu. Aaron Menzo. James Murphy. Nick New. Jay Patel is unable to attend. Joe Pop is unable to attend. Kyle Preston. Shaq Ramon is unable to attend. Henry Strobel. And our last three members are also unable to attend tonight: Ben Vargis, Corey Voeks, and Ryan Wolf. This group gave an outstanding performance in front of a great crowd out in Lancaster, and we were thrilled to have been able to chosen to participate with us, so thank you very much.
The next group we would like to recognize are students who were selected to represent the North Penn School District at the Heritage Festival in Boston, Massachusetts. And to recognize these students, we have Erica Milborn, North Penn High School's Chorus Orchestra Director.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting us this evening. I'm so proud of these students. We, as Dr. Dietrich said, spent four days in Boston earlier in April. We had a lot of fun, but in addition to the fun, the students had a performance there, competing against orchestras from across the country. And I'm so proud to say that our North Penn High School Orchestra students earned a gold first place. They also were chosen by the adjudicators as the outstanding orchestra at the festival. Additionally, they received a trophy for the orchestra earning the highest number of points for their score. And Vinayak Shankar, who was our concert master, earned himself a Maestro's Award for his solos that he performed, so that was something very special as well. So the students in the ensemble are Ali Blank, Caroline Bowling, Viann Chang is unable to be here, Sung Chang, Sharon Chen, Suzie Choi, Maria Fernandez, Shayanna Gashinsky, Kaitlin Helt, Elliot Hong, and Anna Gia are unable to be here, Maria Kodak, Jiyoung Kim, excuse me, was unable to be here, Jin Lee, Sam Lee unable to be here this evening, Danielle Lostrako, Haiming Liu was unable to be here, Elijah May, Ella McCoy, Jessica Nardone, Alex Oger, Krish Perig, Ania Prabuddhaisai was not able to be here this evening, Joanne Rachamar, Andrew Ramirez, Nicholas Rizio, Courtney Sabanas, Brienne Scott, Stephen Seymour was unable to be with us, Vinayak Shankar, James Sidum was unable to be here, Sidney Wilson, Ryan Wolf was unable to be here, Abby Worthington, Alicia Yee, Aiden Yee was unable to be here, Andrew Zanoni. And again, I just want to say thank you to the board and to the school district for your support of these students and their accomplishments. Thank you very much.
The next group we'd like to recognize are students that are being recognized for being selected to represent the North Penn School District at the American Choral Directors' Association Eastern Division Conference in Pittsburgh. And to do the introductions, we have, once again, Matt Clank, Director of North Penn High School's Chamber Singers.
Good evening, once again, everybody. In addition to being a member of PMEA, I'm also a member of ACDA, or the American Choral Directors Association. And the group that you're about to be introduced to are the North Penn High School Chamber Singers, which is our most select vocal group. These students were chosen to take part in ACDA's biannual Eastern Division Conference, and it was quite a prestigious honor to have been chosen. The Northeast Division comprises 13 states and Washington, D.C., and out of all 13 states, only two high school choirs were asked to come and perform at this year's conference, and they're both from this area. Our North Penn High School Chamber Singers and my alma mater are from Central Bucks East. So we were incredibly thrilled, and I also want to give a special recognition to these students and their parents for being flexible. We were supposed to depart during a snowstorm. School was closed on the day we were supposed to depart, and we were actually able to change all of our accommodations to leave a day early, and we didn't miss a beat. They gave a fantastic, actually, two fantastic performances in Pittsburgh. So without anything further, I'd like to introduce these students to you. Megan Akias. Partha Rora. Kieran Bates, who's unable to attend. Doug Bell. Emily Boils, who's unable to attend. Andrew Bazelli. Sarah Bryant, who's unable to attend. Noah Burgett. Madeline Burke, who's unable to attend. Karina Calvaresi. Bela Carlo, who's unable to attend. Charles Claffey. William Clark, who's unable to attend. Jack Collins. Kira Crosby. Philip Crush, who's unable to attend. Jared Delabuono, who's unable to attend. Madison Eppers, who's unable to attend, and Caleb Fia, who's also not here tonight. Leah Franco. Catherine Han, who's unable to be here. Molly Hofstadter. Madison Joyce. Sri Kharkata. Colin Kejo, who's unable to attend. Stephen Kandikian. Paul Klemmer. Olivia Krewash, who's unable to attend. Chris Lee, who's unable to attend. Grace Lewis, who's unable to attend. Joshua Mayer, who's not here tonight either. Aaron Menzo. Emma Moyer. James Murphy. Jay Patel, who's unable to attend. Joe Pop, who's unable to attend. Kyle Preston. Shakabur Ramon, who's unable to attend, and Nina Ramon, who's unable to be here. Hannah Rothman. Anna Shinners, who's unable to attend. Lindsey Spreitzler. Emma Steersman. Samantha Steck, who's unable to attend. Henry Strobel. And our last few who are unable to be here: Alexis Thare, Benjamin Vargis, Audrey Widener, and Rachel Weiner.
About a round of applause for all these students. The next group of students we'd like to recognize are students that were selected to represent North Penn School District in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's District Region and All-State Band, and Matt Clank will be filling in for Ted Heller, who's unable to be here this evening. Ted is our North Penn High School Band Director.
Mr. Heller's having a student leader meeting tonight for next year's Marching Knights, but I'm honored to be able to introduce these students. Each year, high school music directors across the Commonwealth are able to nominate students, outstanding students, to audition for District 11 Band Orchestra and Chorus. These students go into blind audition scenarios and then are chosen for their performance on their instrument. Once they are selected for the district ensemble, they are then able to audition again to advance to the region level, and then again to the all-state level. And we, once again, just had an incredible number of our students honored with that this year. So I'm going to start here with the band students, and introduce to you Noah Burgett, who made district band. Jake Halpern is unable to be here, but he made district and region band. Sri Kharkata, who made district band. Julie Kratz, who made district, region, and all-state band. Alexa LeBron, who was selected for district band, she is unable to attend. And Jess Liu, who made district, region, and all-state band, is unable to attend. Julia McNaul, who made district band. James Murphy was selected to district, region, and all-state band. Michaela New was selected for district band. Nick New was selected for district and region band. Gabby Schwartz was selected for district, region, and state band. Sasha Sedach was selected for district, region, and state band. Jacob Stevens was selected for district band. Hannah Stevens was selected for district band. Tony Zhu is unable to attend, but he was chosen for district and region band. And Allison Yang, who was chosen for district, region, and all-state band.
The next group of students we'd like to recognize are students that were selected to represent North Penn School District in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association District, Region, and All-State Orchestra. And once again, we have Erica Milborn, our North Penn High School Orchestra Director.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clank did a great job of explaining the process, so I'll just introduce my students. Sharon Chen, District and Region Orchestra. Myung Kwak Cho, District Orchestra. Anna Gia was unable to be here, but was selected for the District Orchestra. Courtney Sabanas, District, Region, and All-State Orchestra. And Vinayak Shankar, District Orchestra.
The next group of students we would like to recognize are students that were selected to represent North Penn School District in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association District, Region, and All-State Chorus. And once again, we have Matt Clank, the Director of North Penn High School's Chorus, to do the introductions.
I'm back one more time, everybody. So this group of students was chosen, again, through their auditions for district, region, and all-state choral groups, and a tremendous accomplishment. Let me introduce them to you. Doug Bell, who's selected for district chorus. Madeline Burke, who's unable to be here, for district chorus. Charles Claffey, who was selected to district and region chorus. Leah Franco, who's selected to district and region chorus. Madison Joyce, who was selected to district and region chorus. Sri Kharkata. Sri Kar was selected to district chorus and then was also chosen for all-state vocal jazz this year. Stephen Kandikian, who was selected to district and region chorus. Aaron Menzo, who was chosen for district chorus. Emma Moyer, who was chosen for district, region, and for the third time, all-state chorus. James Murphy was chosen for district chorus. Jay Patel, who's unable to be here, was chosen for district, region, and all-state chorus. Kyle Preston was selected for district and region chorus. Lindsey Spreitzler was selected for district, region, and all-state chorus. And Henry Strobel was selected for district and region chorus.
And finally, we would like to recognize students for being selected to represent North Penn School District in the National Association for Music Education All-National Choir and Concert Band. And to do those introductions, we have Matt Clank, North Penn High School's Music Department Chair.
I'm honored to be able to introduce these two students, who are truly outstanding. One of the great benefits of all the individual students that you just heard recognized for being selected to a PMEA group, they're not just being recognized for being good at their instrument or for singing, they're able to go and participate at festivals where they're meeting their peers, who are also outstanding musicians, and they're getting to work with some of the best directors, conductors, and teachers in our field. And this was not demonstrated anymore, in my mind, than it certainly was for these two young ladies who were selected to this year's all-national conference, which was held back in November in Orlando, Florida. Both Emma and Allison had to qualify for all-state a year ago and then apply for this honor, and I have to say, as the director who went to Florida with them to represent our school and our district, it was such an amazing experience to watch them fit right in with the best student musicians in the country, and I know that they took away a truly tremendous experience. So I'm going to introduce to you, for their accomplishments, Emma Moyer for all-national choir, and Allison Yang for all-national concert band.
All right, we'll do one more round of applause for all the students that were recognized this evening. All right, we're going to take a brief two-minute recess so we can rearrange our seats here.
Okay, with that, we do have two work session items this evening. The first item is the high school baseball field, Canoneers Partnership.
We'll do, Dr. Dietrich, before we get to that, I believe Mr. Devlin is here to make a statement to the board and a donation.
All right, good evening, thank you. My name's Sean Devlin, from Nap Elementary School, fifth grade, also NPA president. On behalf of Alan Malahowski, who is the region president, and myself, I have 13 books of the book Red by Michael Hall, and I have to apologize, I've been walking around all week with these books saying, "Oh, this is the guy who teaches at the high school." No, that's David Hall, and I've been making the mistake, just as awesome a person, but this is Michael Hall. He is a New York Times bestseller. But let me read you something, and then I'll be presenting you the books. Unfortunately, at 43, I need my glasses. Have you ever felt like a blue crayon in a red wrapper? In education, we find labels helpful in identifying students' needs, but how often does a label become a self-fulfilling prophecy for a child? While this debate continues, it's refreshing to find a book that simply validates the journey of self-discovery on which we all travel. The Council for the Advancement of Public Schools, otherwise known as CAPS, would like to help you as you work with students on their journeys. Please accept this autographed copy of the New York Times bestselling children's author and illustrator Michael Hall's book, Red: A Crayon Story, for the inclusion in all 13 elementary school libraries. If you already have a copy in your library, please add this one as well, so that more children have access to Michael's art and positive message. So on behalf of CAPS, Mid-East Region, and of course, NPA, I would like to present the board with 13 signed books by Michael Hall for each board with 13 signed books by Michael Hall for each one of the 13 elementary schools.[602.29][602.29](applause)
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to meet you.
Thank you.[622.04][622.04](laughing)
Thank you for that, Mr. Devlin, and I look forward to reading the book at some time. Thank you for the contribution to our library. All right, and with that, Dr. Dietrich, we will now move on
Thank you.
to the high school baseball field presentation.
And we do have Mr. Kennedy, yes.
At the March Sports Services Committee meeting, Kevin Manero, our varsity baseball coach, and the Canoneers American Legion team, proposed partnership for the varsity baseball field. Unfortunately, Kevin had the conflict tonight, he couldn't be with us, but I'll share the presentation. Kevin's been really successful with some projects, as you can see the scoreboard on the left side of the screen, and the recently constructed dugouts. Those were all done through community involvement partnerships, and Kevin was responsible for a lot of that. Basically, the proposal, tonight's proposal includes the following. The Canoneers are proposing to use the varsity baseball field from May through early June for games and practices. They will maintain the game before and after each game, they'll line the field, and in return, rather than be charged a facility use fee, they'll provide financial support for baseball field projects moving forward. Our grounds department will continue to cut the grass and fertilize the field as we do now. Some of the things we need to consider, Sunday use, we historically have not allowed Sunday use on the grass fields, and the Canoneers are not proposing to use a Sunday field. We also have not allowed our grass fields to be used for local group use, only the synthetic turf field, so that's a consideration. As I said earlier, no rental fees, Canoneers will provide financial support. Another consideration is the wear and tear on the baseball field. Kevin doesn't feel it would be significant, but it is additional play, and that's a natural grass field. And then, probably the last thing we need to consider is what happens if other groups want to do similar things on our grass fields? So we're kind of, it's not strictly written in the policy that you can't use the grass fields, but it's been the historical practice that we don't allow the grass fields. But again, this is a great partnership, so we're bringing it to this group to discuss and try to move forward. So with that, any questions?
Mr. Kennedy, are there any other partnerships between neighboring school districts and other organizations that we can learn from?
Well, there are, and actually, there are others in our school district. Some of the local groups, TYA and Norgwin, maintain fields as well, so we have that at the other fields, not at the high school fields. We have that at elementary and middle school level. This will be the first at the high school. And they're successful partnerships.
And I wanted to confirm, there's been precedent for this before then?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm missing something here. What exactly are you asking for?
The, let me go back. The, oops, sorry. The use of the field for the Canoneers American Legion baseball team, May through early July, in return for contributing to the field projects, not paying a facility use fee.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that.
Do we have standing conflicts with any other organizations that use the fields? Are they disrupting anyone that's currently slotted to use the fields?
They're not. Most of this activity will occur after the varsity baseball season is over.
Scott, is there anything in place where, if something outside of normal wear and tear happens on the field, it would be taken care of by the group using it? Something big?
Not necessarily. I don't expect something big to happen.
Right.
I just think natural wear and tear.
Sure.
But if they maintain it the way they proposed to, and we do our share of the work, hopefully, we can maintain that field in good condition.
Okay.
Well, we have a written agreement with the district and the Canoneers, or is it an informal agreement?
No, this is the first time, so we could do whatever we choose to do. We can make it more formalized or keep it casual, it's up to the board. It's the first one, so that's why there's no precedent for that.
Well, I think perhaps we could refer it over to our solicitor
Yeah, we certainly can.
and get his input.
Yeah, as Scott mentioned, we do have a relationship, the Norgwin team, that property next to Pembroke, across the street from Gwinor Elementary, we own that property. We also then have property up at Hatfield Elementary School and the Hatfield Little League team, we own that property. So we do have relationships with others in the community that are using property that we own. What's different in this case is that this is one of our high school fields, but it's in the off-season, and we think that, you know, it'll all work. So we do recommend this partnership.
Anybody have any other questions? So from here, can we loop in our solicitor?
We will.
Find out what he recommends, and if he's recommending a written agreement, why don't we write up the agreement and bring it back for board action at a future action meeting?
Exactly.
Everybody okay with that? All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the 2018-2019 budget update. You see, Mr. Skrocky has our PowerPoint presentation up.
Okay, we're back online. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. I'd never thought that Fox 29 News would be here to hear about my budget presentation for the 18-year. I'm quite honored, so thank you for attending. You don't have the hammer on me? No, you're not here for this? Okay, thank you.[998.11][998.11](laughter) I appreciate that. My moment of glory. Stimulating discussion. Well, we have basically three items that are left over from last week. Now, we are in May now, and we've had about five to six months worth of budget discussion, so I can certainly provide as much detail as the board would like to hear tonight, but going back and rewinding to our finance committee meeting from last Monday night, we had three outstanding items that need to be addressed. And we spent quite a bit of time last Monday talking about our five-year financial projections, and we did take a look at a couple other scenarios. I think we're up to about 15 scenarios right now for possibilities with the five-year projections. So we can go into whatever level of detail you would like tonight, but the three questions that remain from last week are these. Number one, what direction on the tax rate increase, if any, for the 18-19 year? We're in a position now that the proposed final budget is slated for approval next Thursday evening, so we need to prepare our budget documents for public inspection, in particular, the PDE, Pennsylvania Department of Education, 2028 budget form that needs to be available for public inspection starting next Monday. So we do need a direction, if any, tax rate will be considered for the 18-19 year. Also, two other items that were under discussion last Monday night that need to be brought to resolution are funding for the ice hockey club and the North Penn Music Aids, $8,000 for the ice hockey and $10,000 for the Music Aids. We had some additional questions that were asked, we provided answers to those in the past week, so we'd like some direction to bring closure to those two items as well. So I'll just go into some brief background again for the members in the audience in terms of our budget process, and then we'll turn it back to the board to have discussion, and I can answer any questions. So our budget process, once again, is a three-step process. Preliminary budget was approved in February. The proposed final budget, we're going to be asking for approval next Thursday evening, and then the final budget is slated for adoption at the June school board meeting. So the main purpose for that preliminary budget, once again, was to determine if we had a balanced budget or not. And if we do not have a balanced budget, we may be eligible for what are called Act I exceptions. That would give us the ability for consideration for a tax increase in excess of the Act I index. The Act I index is a cap that school districts need to adhere to. It's an inflationary index, and for North Penn, that cap is 2.4% for the 18-19 school year. So the board did provide authorization for administration to apply for those exceptions through the Department of Education. We were eligible for two exceptions, the first being special education and the second being pension obligation expenses. And we were approved for $1,781,000 worth of exceptions. That doesn't mean that the exceptions need to be used, that's entirely at the discretion of the school board, but we were approved for $1.781 million worth of exceptions. So the two remaining pieces, once again, for the budget timeline for the 18-19 year, May 17th, proposed final budget adoption, and then June 21st, the final budget adoption. And just to emphasize again, the numbers I'll share with you this evening, to a large degree, at least until we get into the budget projections, are predicated on a 0% increase. So we'll start taking a look at the deficit, what that would be with a 0% increase, and then we'll model a couple different tax scenarios. So with that 0% increase, the deficit for the school district for the upcoming year would be $8.87 million. So what a budget deficit means is that we are spending more money than what we're bringing in for the upcoming year. Now, in order to balance the budget, that would require a 5.12% tax increase, and that tax increase is actually not feasible, because with the Act I index, plus the exceptions, that would not yield 5.12%. That would only yield 3.4%. So in reality, North Penn's cap, if all exceptions were used, would be 3.4% for the upcoming year. So the numbers, the revenue and expense numbers, shape up like this. Revenues for the upcoming year, again, with a 0% increase, would be $251.5 million. Expenses, $260.4 million. So therein lies the $8,870,000 budget deficit for the upcoming year. So revenues are going up 1.48, and expenses 3.17. So when you consider our pension obligation increases, expenses rising 3.17 is actually very reasonable in the scheme of things. So this chart we shared last week, in fact, we've shared for the past couple months, a couple different scenarios, what the average homeowner might experience at different levels of tax increase considerations. So starting out at a 0% increase, that would generate $0 additional revenue, from what we shared, that would leave us with a remaining deficit of $8,870,000, and there would be no increase for the average homestead property. And the average homestead property, just a reminder, is about $147,000 in assessed value. That's the median household assessed value for the 18-19 year. At 2.4%, that is the Act I index, that would generate roughly $4.1 million in additional revenue through that tax increase, and that would leave the remaining deficit of $4.7 million. And that would be an $87 increase for the average homestead parcel. At 3.4%, again, that would be the Act I index, plus all available exceptions, that would generate a total of nearly $5.9 million, and that would leave the deficit slightly under $3 million. The average homestead increase at that point would be $124. So we did discuss, I'm not going to spend much time on the revenue changes that we made since the preliminary budget, but since February, we've actually enhanced revenues through changes of the budget totaling $644,392, and expenses also went up to the tune of And the lion's share of the expenditure changes, now, we net everything out, there were some expenses that went down, we're illustrating here some that went up and went down. The largest increase since the preliminary budget was the addition of 21 new, full-time equivalent, new staffing positions in the upcoming year, and that totaled $1.9 million. And the lion's share of those staffing increases stem from special education needs, guidance needs, and addressing student behavior and mental health needs in the school district. So a couple update, updated scenarios. So since last Monday, we have now populated our budget with all known retirements. You recall, last Monday, we were assuming a $1 million estimated savings figure for savings due to retirements. And we budget every year about 20 teacher retirements, and we are pretty much right on that mark. I think Dr. McHugh, we're at either 19 or 20 right now, so we're pretty much right on that mark. So all the retirements have been populated now in the budget, and roughly, the district saves about $40,000 per teacher in terms of salary when an individual retires. So with the 2.4% increase, that obviously brings the deficit down by $4.1 million, and also, we discussed the use of a portion of our fund balance, our reserves. This particular reserve is called the retirement stabilization fund. We have a little bit over $17 million in this fund. The board had the foresight many years ago to establish this fund to help deal with the pension crisis in Pennsylvania, in particular, North Penn School District. Money was put away, saved for a rainy day, and that rainy day is here. Our pension obligation has increased from a low of about 1% back in 2001, up to about 34% next year. A staggering increase over a mere 17 years. That has added millions, tens of millions of dollars to our budget. So using that stabilization fund would bring down the net deficit, if you will, at that point, to slightly under $3 million. That's scenario number one. We also ran another scenario with Act I increase, plus the full use of exceptions. Using the same amount of money for the retirement stabilization fund, that revised deficit would become $1,232,000. Okay, that's a very manageable figure in a $260 million budget, because even with a very small variance in the budget of a half a percent, we would be able to recover that $1.2 million through additional revenue or through lower expenses throughout the year. So those were the two scenarios. Just a quick breakdown of our fund balance. I mentioned earlier that fund balance represents the school district reserves, and we actually have four components of our reserves, fund balance. We have our non-spendable reserve, that's for inventory and prepaid items, $567,000. We have money set aside for our self-insurance healthcare fund of $2.7 million. Our pieceers money, I was alluding to that earlier, the retirement stabilization fund is roughly $17 million, and our unassigned fund balance, for any general purposes, is about $20.8 million. So total fund balance, $41 million. Typically, school districts don't count that non-spendable, because it really can't be used, it can't be spent for any other purposes. So backing that out, we have roughly $40.5 million, $40.6 million in total fund balance. Last week, we also discussed our five-year projections. I'm going to skip over the assumptions. We spent some time on the assumptions that were built into the model last year, or last week, I should say. And I'm going to skip to a chart that is also in Board Docs, if you click on your document in Board Docs, that illustrates the 15 different scenarios that we're presenting in terms of possible iterations of a tax increase for this year and what that might look in years beyond. And I'll summarize this without going through all the particular numbers and say this. There are a number of scenarios that represent a 2.4% increase, and there's also several scenarios that include borrowing in the future for potential building projects, in particular, Napp Elementary School, North Penn High School, and possibly, other buildings as well. So we included in the projections $125 million in a potential borrowing over the next couple years. So I think there's about six iterations with a tax increase of 2.4% and various iterations of borrowings. So the point to walk away with the borrowings, the shorter the term of the borrowing means that the more money, additional funds, you need to pay back over a shorter period of time. The longer the borrowing, the more the money can be spread out, but your total borrowing costs are going to be increased over that. So that's a model with 2.4%. We basically replicated that as well, and included the possibility of full-day kindergarten in the 1920 year, and also modeled scenarios, three scenarios, utilizing a 2.4% increase with full-day kindergarten, with a 15-year borrowing, a 20-year borrowing, and what we call a smoothing borrowing, kind of an equalized borrowing, where it spread out to repayment over about a 12-year period. We also used those same scenarios with a 3.4% increase. Again, that would be Act I plus exceptions, and we also modeled three projections utilizing a 2.9% increase. That's about halfway between the Act I index and the exceptions. So we took a look at the annual deficit, and we also took a look at the ending fund balance after a five-year period of time. And the story really isn't surprising, because any kind of increase that is levied this year has a cumulative effect. So for example, should the board consider a 3.4% increase, that generates about $1.7 million in additional revenue this coming year. But that would be $1.7 million additional, not just for the 18-19 year, but it would be $1.7 for the 2021, 1920, 2021, 2122, et cetera, et cetera. So that does have a compounding cumulative effect. So we modeled all those scenarios, and we took a look at what the ending fund balance, the ending reserve would look, all the way out to the 2023-24 year. Clearly, the district would be in a very strained financial position under the scenario of a $125 million borrowing plus full-day kindergarten, if the board elected to go to the 2.4 index in the upcoming year. In fact, under the one scenario, 2.4% increase, full-day kindergarten, $125 million borrowing, and a level borrowing over about 12-year period, it would leave the district with a mere $44,000 in fund balance in the 2023. with a mere $44,000 in fund balance in the 23, 24 year. That's a critically low level. With a 20-year borrowing, it would leave the district with $5.9 million. With a 15-year borrowing, it would leave the district with $3.8 million. So then we bumped up the Act One Index by .5, 50 basis points, a half a percent, and looked at those same three scenarios. And clearly, as you might expect, the ending fund balances at the end of the 23, 24 year were much higher, and even higher yet at the full Act One Index, plus exceptions. So when you look at the upcoming budget in a one-year silo, it might be easy to come and reach a conclusion and make a recommendation regarding any level of taxation for the upcoming year, but we certainly implore you to consider the long-term projections. Long-term projections tell a story. Clearly, when we're out five or six years, so many things might change. The assumptions that we make may not hold to be true. But I mentioned last week, we need to examine the trend. What is the trend telling us? And I would argue that if certain initiatives are implemented over the next couple of years, in particular, full-day kindergarten and an aggressive renovation project, not necessarily aggressive, but a very costly renovation project, since the high school would be a very large project, and Napp Elementary School, $125 million is a lot of money to borrow. So what is the trend telling us over the next five years? It's telling us that absent consideration for additional funds beyond just one year, the district will be in a very difficult situation in the 23, 24 year. And I realize that decisions have not been made with some of these initiatives. They'll be made in future months or in future years, but I think it's really important to consider the impact that any level of increase will have in the 18, 19 year, in the years beyond, when you consider the possible initiatives that the board may want to explore. So with that, again, I'm going to jump back to the tax scenarios. We're presenting different levels here, and we show the remaining deficit at various levels of an increase. Again, we kind of focus on the 2.4, 2.9, and 3.4. So at 2.4, again, the remaining deficit would be $4.7 million before use of any fund balance. At 2.9, the remaining deficit would be $3,848,000, and at 3.4 would be $2,978,000. And again, we modeled those 15 different long-term projection scenarios based on our discussion from last Monday, and also based on some board comments in the past week. We can model any iteration between 0 and 3.4 that you would like. So those are not necessarily magical numbers. We can model any number that you're looking for. Again, we are up against a deadline, and we are seeking direction tonight in terms of the final millage rate. We do need to prepare the PDE documents for public inspection. So the board is not bound. Once the board considers the proposed final budget, you may change your mind between the proposed final budget and the final budget. It's not typically recommended. Typically, what has been done here in many districts, that once the proposed final budget is set, in particular with the tax rate, that is usually set then for the final budget. It certainly can go down, but it's a little problematic and troublesome if it goes up. Notice requirements and communication with the community, I think, if you propose a final budget at one number, and it later goes up to a different number. But certainly, it can be approved at a higher number, it can come down lower. That's certainly permissible. But again, that's one of the items, one of the takeaways, one of the asks we have tonight is determination of that millage rate. And then the other two items, and then we'll open it up for discussion, would be the $8,000 ice hockey contribution to the Ice Hockey Club, and the $10,000 contribution to the North Penn Music Aids. Now, based on the conversation last week, I think there were some conflicting opinions. At the present time, we do have that total of $18,000 included in the budget. I think some board members were recommending pull it out until we have a final decision. Some were saying, leave it in until we had a final decision. So we have it in right now, can easily be taken out before we produce the final, proposed final budget documents next week.
Steve, we've, I think the board has invited the representatives from the hockey and the music aids associations to the meeting to provide some information to the board. So perhaps if those individuals are in the audience, if they'd like to speak to the board before we have the discussion, that might be helpful, because it might help us frame our deliberations and our discussions. So if anybody's here from Ice Hockey Music Aids, come on up.
My name's Tom Barber. I'm treasurer of North Penn Ice Hockey for the last 10 years. I live at 1804 Dutchman Circle in Harleesville. I've been resident of the school district for 30 years. So all my three kids have attended North Penn and have graduated on, and here I stand. So I provided, Steve, and I think it's been distributed to all the board members, a history of the North Penn Ice Hockey Club, and it's a history over the past 10 fiscal years. The Hockey Club is a 501(c)(3) organization. It's been incorporated since 1996. And we do get funding, and we have received funding from the school district over the past 10 years and beyond. That funding has oscillated from a low of 6,000 to a high of 12, with one year us not receiving any funding at all. As part, even though we're a club within the school district, and we not only receive funding, but we have a, what we believe is a pretty strong relationship with the school district. We're not a PIAA club, but we like to act like one. So we've been, we've had dialogue and ongoing discussions and relationships with the principals, the athletic director, and the trainers. We do get bused to away games, and what I mean by away games is our home rink is Hatfield Ice. There are other teams in the area that use that as a home rink, like Pen Ridge and Soudern. So we have away games at Hatfield Ice, but certainly we don't get bused. So if we have away games to Warwick, or BCI, which is out by Warrington, or Grundy, which is out by Bristol, we get bused there, and we do appreciate that. We also get involved with impact testing within the school district for concussions. As we all know, hockey is a contact sport, and we do appreciate that offer and the continued support in that area. And our kids do get varsity letters, to the extent they earn them in the varsity program. So we appreciate that. The Hockey Club, we have two high school teams and two middle school teams. And the funding of the program comes from basically three sources. One from member dues, and they range anywhere from about 100, I'm sorry, from varsity program around $1,000, give or take, a year. And middle school, about $720 to $800, depending upon the year. Other funding comes from the school district, as you well know, which averages about 9% of our annual funds. And the rest comes from either donation, sponsorship, or fundraising. And that average is about 13% to 15% of our fund, of our funding each year. Our fund balance, we strive to have a zero budget each year. And that fluctuates, because one of our unknown, we have fixed costs for the ice, which is a significant cost. It averages about $370 an hour. But our unknown cost is the number, or unknown revenue source is unknown headcount. Our headcount, in terms of members, averages, ranges from 53 members per year up to 73. So the unknown in our budget each year is how much revenue we're going to get from members, because it can oscillate. There's a lot of unknowns. People move in and out of the district. We have kids who drop out of the program. We have kids who come into the program. So that's an unknown. But what is known is our ice contract. We have typically a three-year contract with Hatfield Ice, so that's a given. We know we're going to have that cost. We know we're going to have costs with suburban high school hockey. We have league fees that average, at the high school level, varsity of about $5,000 a year. JV is about $4,400, and middle schools ranges in the mid-upper threes. And on top of that, we have referee costs, as when we have home games, our varsity refs are $70 each. We have two referees. JV's go $60 each, and middle school's $50. So those are our known costs. The unknown is the membership each year, so it's volatile. So if you've seen by the information I provided you, some years we're positive, and some years we're negative. We've had fund balances ranging from $42,000 to $75,000. I think we've been fiscally prudent, as if you read up some literature on tax-exempt organizations or nonprofits, typically, best practice is to have a fund balance to cover operating costs anywhere from six months to two years. We had a strategic plan that was put into place back in 2002. Our goal was to get roughly one year's worth of operating expense in our fund balance. Right now, on average, we're around about eight and a half months of fund balance to cover the unknown or the rainy days. And we've had our rainy days. So that's, you know, I think we're in pretty good financial shape, but I hope you don't jeopardize us for being, acting fiscally responsible and having a fund balance to cover our rainy days. If you have any questions, you know, I'm more than willing to answer.
So what does it do to you, your organization, if we take this money away from you? Well, how does that play out?
How's that play out?
Yeah, what is going to be cut?
The bottom line, well, it's not necessarily what's going to get cut, because, I mean, ice is ice. We can't take that away. We've actually reduced our ice costs over the past couple of years, because actually, we've had parents, because some of their kids are in travel programs too, that they feel, we used to do two practice slots a week, and they typically have two, sometimes three games a week, so they wanted to cut back to one night of practice. So our ice costs has come down, and so their membership dues come down. If you take away the funding, well, I mean, bottom line, we're going to have to increase the membership fees. It's either that or a combination of additional fundraising. So probably a combination thereof. The most immediate impact, on average, the funding would basically be $120 to $150 per member. So if you equate this, if you cut our funding completely, as demonstrated by Mr. Sharaki, if you go 3.4% increase in tax, everybody has to pay 120. If you cut our funding, our members have to pay 120 to 150. It's a mathematical equation. That's the bottom line. And we go through that every year in our budget, because we don't know what a headcount is. So if our headcount goes up, well, each additional player drives revenue. If we lose headcount, it costs us. So we try to go zero budget. If we know what the headcount is, and that can vary, then we manage to a zero budget. Okay, so if we see our headcount go down, we may increase fees, or we do have a surplus. So even though it's gone down some, then we can cover that some years. Okay, and we try to do that. I mean, we're in good financial shape, so we don't want to increase costs if we don't have to, and we have the fund balance to avoid that as much as possible.
I'd just like to thank you for how forthright you've been with sharing information with us, and as timely as you've been. So thank you.
Well, I do appreciate the opportunity, and we thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. I'd like to thank you. Mr. Barber's been very helpful in providing information and financial reporting, including the IRS 990 forms that need to be submitted. So thank you, Mr. Barber.
Good evening. My name is Frank Stumpfo. I live at 2921 Denby Drive in Hatfield. Been a resident of the school district for 30 years approximately. I've had two students graduate from North Penn High School, and we have a daughter who's a junior at North Penn High School as well. I've been active with the Hockey Club for more than 20 years, initially as a board member. And I was actually the predecessor of Tom, is the treasurer, the strategic plan that he referred to as something that we adopted while I was president of the Hockey Club. And I just finished my 20th year coaching North Penn Ice Hockey as well. We've had, with an average of 50-some kids per year, we've had more than 1,000 students go through the program in the last 20 years. Some of those hockey players have gone on to play in the professional ranks. We've had one student, not under my coaching, but under previous coaches, actually win two Stanley Cups. We're very proud of that. A number of the students also go on to play college at the hockey level. But aside from the athletic accomplishments of these students, the thing I think that we're most proud of is the academic accomplishments of the students. We've been blessed over the years to have our principals come to the hockey banquet each year to present honor roll awards to the students. I can, used to know these numbers off the top of my head, but I don't have them memorized at this point. But order of magnitude, the number of students or the percentage of students from the ice hockey program that are on the honor roll is about 1 and 1/2 to 1.7 times that of the general student body. So we stress the academic side of it as well. In addition, we fund a couple scholarships for students. We call them the Academic Excellence Award. My wife and I are proud to be co-sponsors of that award. So we focus on the academic side as well, and the life lessons that you learn. North Penn High School, as you all know, is one of the largest high schools in the state. We have one football team. We have essentially one band, one basketball team, one this, one that. And ice hockey is another avenue for the students of our school district to participate in athletics and learn the lessons of life. We're proud for what we've been able to accomplish. I want to thank the school board for the opportunity to address you this evening, and for all that you do for the school district, and implore you to continue to fund the ice hockey program. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here from the MPMA, North Penn Music Aids?
Okay. With that, I guess we can have discussion on the budget. Are there members of the public that are here to comment on the budget, that have public comment on the budget? All right, we'll do, why don't we do public comment on the budget prior to our discussion? And we'll do, if we can hold each speaker to three minutes, that would be helpful. Mr. Patchell?
Hi, my name is William Patchell. I live at 404 Bonn Atlanta. I've had two students go through this system, was very qualified, and went on to, we're very proud of them. And I have no complaints whatsoever. What I do represent is I represent a lot of the senior citizens. I'm 71 years old. I'm trying to stay in good shape so that I can, I can speak to the board. Some of them are a little bashful, don't have the oratory skills. So I figure I'd make it myself. And my appointed job to come here and plead the case of those that are retired, that haven't had a raise in about 10 years, okay, and now what they did was due to the federal tax code. You have the low salt diet, that's state and local taxes. That gives a married couple a maximum deduction of $10,000. What's going to happen is the slow grip of this inflationary thing, which is about to begin, this is all going to be the 10-year treasury, three, three and a quarter, three and a half, four. The historical norm for the 10-year treasury is about 5 to 6%. I hate to see what this, the whole, the whole operation would look like if that were to return to the norm, to the norm. Jerome Powell, I believe, is a handmaiden to Paul Volcker. If anybody was alive then, I know you're very young, you may not remember Paul Volcker, but I tell you what, it was pretty grim. The three-month T bill was about 17%, and that was during Vietnam. And, you know, fielding an army in Vietnam was, I made $168 a week. I wasn't breaking the bank. Okay, so what you have to be cognizant of is, and I pointed this out, what I'm going to do is, I'm not going to sell my house. I'm going to move to Florida. I'm going to become a resident. I'll leave it empty. I'll get the grass cut for $38 a week, because I'll tell you what, you can't replicate my house anymore. Ryan Holmes builds things, little things there, cost $400,000. Maybe you better go chase those people. But I'll tell you what, I'll just leave it empty. You won't get any new customers. And what would you do if there were five or 6,000 people with the same idea? Yeah, why should I sell my house? It's still going up. I can borrow money on it, according to the tax code, and they're Florida residents. That wouldn't look too, that wouldn't look very good for the district. Wow. And I believe that Mr. DiSazio said, well, what's the problem? Spenditures are going up and student enrollment going down? Yeah, well, you know, they changed the tax code. You can only have two dependents now. The federal government's not really supporting the American family in a very big way. They had no problem cutting it down to two dependents. They had no problem cutting it down to two dependents. Then you have all the problem, oh, the chips might go away. Oh, they're very compassionate. They're taking all the health insurance away. So you have to understand that the retirees, you may want to have a lot of things. Everybody wants to have a lot of things. I said, you know what? I understand that all these things are important. The music is important. Ice hockey would be very good. What I would tell you, I was here with the, for the, the show which we had for Fiddler on the Roof. It was excellent. The auditorium was filled with about 900 retirees and they're very happy. They live in the district and they can see the fruits and labors of what's going on. But when I look at all those people, I'm thinking, boy, this whole room's filled with people that are really having a hard time. And I know they're having a hard time. You have to budget. You have to be really, really good when you're a senior citizen because you're not getting any more raises. And when somebody mails you a bill, I talked to Patty Gallagher, I go in, I pay my taxes at Montgomery Township, and she says, Bill, Bill, please, I understand. I only collect the money. I don't want to hear about it. Everybody that comes in here that's your age is crying, crying their eyes out. If you people are making, what, 250,000, 300,000, two people together? Well, you know what? You're doing pretty good. You have to understand that Lansdale's filled with a lot of people that are really having a hard time. I believe a cost sharing on that ice hockey, okay, you need eight? I'll give you four. Have a cookie sale.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the budget?
Hi, everyone. I'm Chris Paisley, resident of Lansdale, 102 East Sixth Street. My wife and I have been in the borough for about 13 years and we really like the area, really like the diversity. I work full-time, but sir, I haven't gotten a raise in a few years either. According to the numbers you put up for the budget, look like the average millage increase would be about $124 per the average household, which is about $10 per year. And really, that's not much money compared to what the average household income probably is in this area. My wife and I are the parents of two beautiful transracially adopted children. My daughter's a second grader in Napp Elementary, and we really like the diversity of the school, the diversity of the area. And we really like the reputation of North Penn School District overall, but we're a little disappointed in the, the standards that are at Napp Elementary specifically. Some of the schools have central air conditioning. Our school does not. There's some concerns with the outdated water system and electrical system, and I think that it'd be great if that school were up to code along with the other ones in the school district. Thank you.
Sir, could you please sign the register? Thank you.
Anybody else on the budget? Public comment on the budget? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into board discussion at this point. And Mr. Scrocky, you indicated you're looking for direction on a couple of different items. The, a decision on any millage increase in the budget, a decision on the funding for ice hockey, and a decision on funding for the music aids.
Correct. Those three, yes.
Great. All right. I'll open it up to any members of the board.
May I, Mr. Vice President, may I suggest that we tackle the clubs first and stay on, we could at least stay focused on that and then open up to the wider discussion.
All right. So any, any comment on the, the clubs, as Mr. Gossat indicated? Take that item first.
I would like to keep the, either the full amount or a portion of the amount for the ice hockey team. If we can't do the full amount, fine, but I don't think we should just kill it, especially without any notification.
I agree. I'm in favor of keeping the full amount for both organizations at this point. It's baked in at this point. We planned for it at this point. I don't think that it's going to break our budget to take $18,000 from these organizations at this point, so.
I would be in agreement with that as well.
I'm also in agreement. I do believe going forward, I prefer if the, the board considers looking in the longer-term policy development so that we don't have arbitrary decision-making and anyone who comes after us has a clear lens to judge any of these spending decisions by. Certainly can have a, a respect for the funding that these clubs expect now.
I agree also. I, I think that the timing of this would make it very difficult and so the commitment to, to maintain, I think, should go forward. I do agree that this is an issue of policy of how we review things on a more systematic level and maybe not waiting until, I mean, I, we, we began talking about budgets in January. So including into the policy timelines and dates that would give a little bit more advanced notice also.
And I also think to make sure that other clubs are aware, because I believe in, in some of the information that was given to us, we don't really support through the general fund any other clubs at the high schools. So I think it's important for us to make sure that they're aware, that, you know, if they need that support so that we can be balanced in kind of that systematic way.
And we do pay for advisors for various clubs. And then it depends how you define some of those clubs in terms of some of their activities they get involved in, because there are some occasions when, for example, the Future Business Leaders of America, we support them pretty extensively because they have competitions. When they go for competitions, you know, we pay a lot of that expense. They also do raise a lot of money though, too. But we do have partners, you know, in that, in that regard. And there are other clubs that it's simply just the advisors, you know, stipend and that's it.
I was just going to say, I agree as well. I don't think we should pull funding this, at this point, but I do think this needs to be looked at in a long-term scenario.
All right. I think you have direction on that item, and I certainly appreciate the willingness of the groups to come forward, provide all the information. We have a clear sense of what's being done with the money and things like that, and I hope that we'll continue to solicit that, those requests and, and ask for that information if we have any questions moving forward. All right. So that, that resolves that. That item will stay in the budget for next year. And then we will move to the general budget discussion at this point.
Thank you, everyone, for your support.
Comments on the budget?
I'm looking at two walls with a bunch of initiatives and a bunch of green dots on them. And I'm trying to find the initiatives that aren't going to cost us any money, and I'm not having much luck with that. So while I understand that there are some of us who are concerned about making sure that we have our strategic plan in place before we worry about finding funding sources for some of these initiatives, I might remind us that there was a point in time when we felt that it was important to also find funding first and then figure out what to do in terms of our initiatives. It's not a bad way to go about planning. I understand Mr. Patchell's point about the seniors and the financial burden on them. I would invite him to talk to some of his, his friends, his constituents, as it were. Let me let them know that June 9th at Doc Woods, we're going to be having some board members come to help folks that qualify for our, our rebate reduction program, to see if they qualify financially, to help shoulder some of that burden because there are many people in this community, at least those that are most vulnerable, that this board is only one of two districts in the entire state that's taken this initiative to try to help those folks, because that is a reality. But there's another reality, too, when you look at these, these initiatives. You know, there's, we've all heard from schools, teachers, parents, and students about the needs in their classrooms, about the needs in their buildings. We started to make some headway with that, with these 20 positions. I think we would all agree that it's, it's not enough. You know, we are talking about the full-day kindergarten initiative. This is money that year over year we could count on being in the budget that could help support that effort. And unfortunately, the federal government, when they wrote IDEA, the Individuals Disabilities Education Act, were supposed to be funding special education to the tune of 40% of the cost per student. They fall far, far below that number year after year. I don't think they've ever hit 20%. So it falls on us, especially when you look at the state and the state's willingness to heap the pension obligations that they didn't fulfill back onto us as well, to, to figure out how to make these things work. And I'm not sitting here because I think that there's nothing that needs to be done in this district. I believe that there's a lot that needs to be done. I think we have a great district. I think we've asked our teachers and our staff and our kids and our families year after year to do more with less, and they've answered that call. They've answered that call. This district has continued to perform despite the fact that we have reduced, we've increased class sizes, we've reduced our staffing. I think it's time to rectify some of that. And I think that when you look at these numbers and you look at this five-year projection, I don't know how you're looking at that and not seeing that as being the fiscally responsible thing to do.
I just have a question too, Mr. Scrocky, just to make sure that I, my facts are straight and understood. I, I know you, you had done some research and shared information about where out of the 21 school districts, North Penn is at for millage. Are we in the bottom third? Is there a specific number?
We are actually in the bottom quartile. North Penn is the fifth lowest in Montgomery County. Our millage rate this year is 24.6704. So we are the fifth lowest. And the next closest to us is almost two mills away. So we're pretty far away from the number six position. We're actually closer to the number four position, really close to the number four position in the county.
Thank you. And just as a follow-up for you or as well with Dr. Dietrich, and this is, as one of the new guys, I want to make sure I have my facts straight. 2011, I believe the number was upwards of $800 billion was cut from the state education budget. And it's my understanding that we, you know, that board acted appropriately to address a loss of revenue. Was it upwards of $4 million that was, that, that we did not receive due to that cut in the state budget?
Well, it would depend on what you had included in all those calculations. Actually, our basic end funding now is only around roughly $9 million total. But I think you're referring to the year when they had that federal stimulus money and then there was a fiscal cliff when that stimulus money ran out. And, you know, there's still a big concern across our state in terms of the impact of that.
Thank you. That's, I know there were a lot of moving parts to that. The end result, though, was, my understanding was a loss of teachers' aides, reduction in status for, for teachers at secondary level?
Yeah, we went through quite a period there of living with vacancies and not replacing individuals. And that, you know, that's significant to our school district.
Was that upwards, two dozen, three dozen positions?
Well, total, when you look at, and one of the numbers that's very instructive across our, analyzing the data, is the number of people on medical benefits. We went to self-funding. We had 1,980 individuals in the district on medical benefits, and now we're under 1,600 on medical benefits. When you look at the total FTEs of teachers, we have now come back up to approximately the same number we were some number of years ago. A lot of reduction in terms of the number of people on medical benefits, significantly within our support staff.
And, and we lost a number of support staff, correct?
Yes.
And lastly, because maybe this is, you know, why I'm the new guy, I think I might have got involved around this time because it was a class size issue. Did those cuts or the budgets at that time have anything to do with policy changes?
Well, we did adjust our class size guidelines. We upped every class size guideline by one. So we had a upper limit in certain grades of 24 that went to 25. We had some other upper limits that went from 25 to 26, and we had some upper limits that went from 28 to 29 when we looked at our class size guidelines.
So is my, and thank you for that information. I'm sorry, I'm not meaning to try to cross-examine, but get my facts straight. Is it, is it safe to say that we are, have we caught up to the 2011 cuts? Are we behind, ahead? Where are we at today?
That's a difficult question to answer in terms of, you know, what perspective you'd like to use on that. I do think, as Mr. Fusco had said, our individual doing a tremendous job across the school district. We certainly have seen some improvements upon the technology that's available for the individuals in our school district. So I think that we're doing a, a great service to our community members and the education we provide to our students. That said, of course, there's still concerns and we continue to want to improve as a school district.
Well, I thank my colleagues for the, the time and the questions. I, I do want to leave with a very positive experience in seeing the, the metrics that have been developed by Mr. Kennedy and his team and the support services and what they've shared also as we've benchmarked ourselves against other districts across the state and especially in the area. We are lean and mean. We get a lot more done with a lot less. And I think the administration is to be commended for that as well as prior boards with putting us in that position. Thank you.
So first of all, thank you, Mr. Scrocky, because the amount of information that we've requested from you in one week's time and that you've been able to provide us, we really appreciate. So I guess what I'm looking at is a way to do Napp, the renovations that need to be done at Napp, and I appreciate the comment from our family from Napp, because, I mean, I, I don't think anyone disagrees it needs to be done. What I could not find was a, a scenario where you have full daycare and Napp and end with much of a fund balance. I could not find that in the 15 scenarios that you sent me, and that's what I was looking for, because I don't think any of us are looking for, looking to raise taxes. I have a mother that's on a fixed income. I understand, understand that, and I don't think any of us are. But when I'm looking specifically at the cost of special education to our district, we added, or we're looking at adding 20 positions and not enough in the area of special education for a district our size to really support our inclusive practices, which I think we're doing a really good job at. And to that end, I mean, I think I commend, I don't know if Dr. Ruffo is here, but I certainly commend the work that she's doing in that area, but I think we need to support that effort. I, I, we don't think there, any more can be said about Napp if you, I mean, and then class sizes. I'm, I'm concerned about the, the class sizes. I would like to see those reduced even if it were by one. And I just don't see how we get those things done. But even if I just, if we just focus on full daycare and the renovations at Napp, I, I didn't see a scenario that got us there without being at 3.4.
Now, keep in mind, we have scenarios six through 15, if you're looking at the chart in board docs. That includes an element of full-day kindergarten in every scenario from six to 15. Now, we didn't model just Napp alone for renovations. That would be approximately $25 million for renovation project. We didn't model the borrowing just for that because part of our RFP for the architectural services include facility study at Napp Elementary, North Penn High School, Pendale Middle School, and this building. And we also have consideration, and we have previous discussion for athletic field improvements as well. So our modeling was really tied into the facility studies that are going to be completed by the architect once selected. And that's why we used a $125 million figure. And perhaps that's too conservative of a figure, but that's the figure that we use based on the information we have now. So we didn't model just Napp alone. Now, the way we typically structure our debt, had we modeled Napp just by itself, it would not be too dissimilar from scenario number six, which is full-day kindergarten plus 2.4% increase in 18, 19. So the ending fund balance in that scenario was $23.3 million. So you might need to carve off a couple million off of that, but it wouldn't bring it down to single digits like some of the other scenarios.
But we would still have the high school.
Correct. Correct.
That's significant.
And that's significant.
We thought it was prudent since that's part of the facility study to include that. We did have prior estimates from several years ago for that project. So So we were working with our financial advisor to work on different scenarios. We actually have four different models for the borrowing as well of the $125 million. So we have 15 budget scenarios, and we have four borrowing scenarios that are at play here as well.
What would you say is an appropriate fund balance, I mean, a healthy fund balance at the end of this projection?
That's an excellent question. And you've heard me discuss before at prior meetings about how important it is to have a healthy fund balance because it dictates our bond rating. You know, especially, it's especially important when we're considering borrowing money for a project. Our bond rating is determined by Moody's. That's a rating agency we use, and it, basically, it's an assignment of risk for the school district. Will the district be able to repay the money that it borrows is the question. And North Penn School District currently has a bond rating, it's outstanding, it's AA1, and we're one of only 18 school districts in the state that have a AA1 rating or higher. So that's phenomenal. It's a credit to the board to have a rating that high. And I've also discussed, when I'm on the interrogation, I mean, ratings call with Moody's, you know, the two-hour call where they ask everything about the finances, they lift up the hood and examine, feels like every line item, 7,000 line items in our budget. But the first question they start with, they say, "Talk about your fund balance. Talk about any budget deficits you have. Talk about a systematic imbalance in your budget. Talk about where you're going to be in five years with your fund balance." That is the most important criteria when Moody's determines what our bond rating is. So why is bond rating important? Well, the higher our rating, the lower the interest rate we're able to get because we are less of a risk to the individuals that buy the bonds. So that drives down costs. In fact, the last rating upgrade we had was a mere two years ago, and that was for the second-phase borrowing for Montgomery Elementary School. Our rating at that point went from AA2 to AA1. That saved the taxpayers about $750,000 in interest payments over a 10-year period. So bond rating is really important, especially when you're considering borrowing money of, especially $125 million as a possibility. And we're pleased to report about two weeks ago, Moody's does an annual review now, and they did maintain our AA1 bond rating. So we're really pleased with that. So to get to your question now, what is a good fund balance level? Right now, fund balance, all-in, all levels of fund balance, no matter what you want to call it, unassigned, Piers stabilization, self-insurance fund, to me, that's the number I look at. You can carve it up in many different ways, but we're at about 16% of our total expenditures right now. I think that's a reasonable number. What's a low limit, maybe 10%, 12% lower limit? 16% I think, in my opinion, is really at a sweet spot and allows North Penn to receive that outstanding bond rating. So what is 16%? Well, 16% of a much higher number in the future, you know, I don't have that particular number five years out with the expenditure figure is, but I would venture to guess it's close to $300 million. So you're looking at, you know, upwards of over $40 million in fund balance at the end of that five-year period. And there's not many scenarios on the projections where you see an ending fund balance of over $40 million. You don't see that, in fact, on any of the 15 models that we're presenting.
I think we've had a lot of discussion about the impact that this would have on those on fixed incomes. And I was trying to do some research on, we also have, within this community, a significant percentage of renters who are also on fixed income, who also have students within the district. I was trying to see if I could find research on when and how a tax increase was passed on from a private or commercial landlord to a tenant and the burden then that that would place on renters. And I couldn't really find anything. But have we seen a trend or pattern in the district as we've, as we've raised taxes, what has been passed on to those who are renters within the community?
I don't have data on that. The only data we have, and this is through our work with our consultants for tax assessment appeals, and that is the apartment market, if you will, is very hot right now. And that's driven by a number of things. It's driven by demand in particular, and that might be one of the unintended consequences or just outright consequence from the economic downturn in the late 2000s, that individuals were forced out of their homes and homes were foreclosed and individuals were forced to rent in apartments. So we do have that data that supports the valuation and the rent prices are going up because of demand. But secondly, I think when you look at North Penn, and we mentioned earlier that we're the fifth lowest tax rate, people want to live here. So you would have to argue that if you're a renter, you're receiving, all else equal, compared to another area, you're receiving a relatively low rent figure if you can come up with that hypothetical situation where it's the exact same apartment complex in two dissimilar school districts. Because, quite frankly, you would have to think at some point, I'm not sure what the tolerance is for a landlord, but at some point, the landlord is going to pass on the tax increase to the renter. There's no question about it. But we are proud that we have low taxation, so that makes for an attractive market for individuals that want to move to North Penn School District. In fact, we're not only the fifth lowest, we're 24% below the countywide average in terms of millage rate among the school districts in Montgomery County, the 21 school districts. That bears repeating, we're 24% lower than the average millage rate among the 21 school districts in Montgomery County.
Steve, how do we rate as it compares to the neighboring school districts in Bucks or, whatever it is? Chester County, whatever, Delaware County, whatever, those schools, ones that are adjacent?
It's a little difficult to do a millage comparison because the assessments are different in the other counties. For example, in Bucks County...
So where does, where does one in Delaware County that might be comparable to us? Can you do that? Or?
In terms of millage rate?
Or dollars or?
Yeah.
Tax dollars?
We'd have to investigate what the average homestead is paying. That's the best way of getting at it. You can't simply look at the millage rate because, the millage rates are completely different because it's based on when the last countywide reassessment was done. That kind of drives that out. So we can certainly take a look at what the average homestead is costing in Bucks County school districts and Delaware County, Chester County, districts like that. But if we look at our neighboring school districts here, some of our neighbors that you might consider are peer, we can certainly make that comparison in Montgomery County. It's a little more difficult when you go outside of the county, but with a little work, we can obtain that data.
Okay.
And I don't have a sense for what the average bill here in North Penn is compared to, let's say, a Westchester area school district. I really have no idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Scrocky, that you, of the wealth of information you provided over the past week, I want to make sure I understand correctly. One of the figures that I had asked, as I'm trying to understand some better context and about structural deficits, one of the numbers that I had asked you to run dealt with an average of .25 of an increase over the prior five years. Because I'm trying to understand how that would compound and the baked-in issue, because that informs our decisions here today. From my understanding, it looks like we would be at just under $9 million. Is that a correct read?
Correct. And that was a good exercise. Basically, the exercise was, looking back over the past five years, had the tax increase been .25% higher, 25 basis points higher, what additional revenue would that have generated? And I mentioned earlier in the presentation that the revenue is cumulative. So any increase from this year carries over to the next year and the year after and the year after that. So we went back and took a look at the increases over the past five years and baked in an additional .25% and used it based on the assessed value at that time in that particular year, and it generated just slightly under $9 million in cumulative additional revenue had there been a .25% increase. And we also examined what it would look like with a .5% increase going back in time. And that would be about $17.8 million in additional revenue. Then another step I did was to take a look at, okay, with that additional millage rate at .25%, where would we rank in the county? Well, interesting that we would still rank the fifth lowest in the county even with that additional .25% because number six is just so far away from us.
And that data is very interesting because I want to be driven in my decision by the data. And it informs certainly how I'm going to, you know, how I believe I'm going to decide tonight. But what we're really at, and as I remember before being sworn in, it's trying to deal with, I know Vice President D'Azio has mentioned, you know, there's been some structural issues as well in our budget. And how can we begin to have a more proactive, strategic process that actually gets ahead for when the inevitable crisis does occur, that we can mitigate it better so that we don't have a wide variation or a wild swing every few years where we have to take a corrective action and just increase, you know, with the absolute full rate and the exception? I'm surprised, you know, when I see numbers like 1.99% last year, and I remember trying to get some clarification as to, you know, why 1.99%. But, you know, that's, right there is missing already a .25. There are aspects now that, as the economy begins to pick up, and yet there are people who are being left behind. Ultimately, what we're trying to set as priorities is how are we able to get the right amount of revenue to provide a high enough quality education to all of our students? You know, the diversity is a strength of our district, but we're only as strong as the dollars that are able to afford the quality services that we're looking into. Very proud of what we've been able to do for Safe Schools and that, you know, this board unanimously has put some significant fundings and made, funding into the budget and made that a priority. I'll defer to the education experts here about what the additional staff mean, but I, you know, a majority of that is special education and dealing with climate issues and teaching and inclusion. How can we do it even better? And so these are changes that when I look at a consideration for an exception and what we need to do for infrastructure, you know, we know NAP's problems, we know what we're dealing with at the high school, we know that we need to be an attractive community for young families, but also for those on fixed incomes and those who need to have value in their homes. I think that this board needs to take a serious consideration as to what we need to do to change from some of the past practices and have a proactive, strategic approach that is able to have a manageable deficit and a healthy fund balance. I believe the only way to get to that, and I was looking at options 10 and 11 for some of my board members who might be dizzy looking at the numbers, but that's a 3.4%. It's including that exception. And then really, the difference between number 10 and 11 is whether we're going 15 or 20 years. But it's with that, I feel we can have a manageable deficit and a, as healthy a fund balance as we can.
What assumptions do these scenarios build in for future years in terms of Act One?
The scenario, the scenarios, the way they're built right now, the base scenario includes an Act One increase. So it would be raising taxes to the Act One limit each year. So the projections that we use come from the Independent Fiscal Office of the State, the IFL. They do have projections out five years, and we did use those exact numbers. I think the very last year, it's up to like 3.5%. So we assume the full increase up to the Act One projection each year.
So for something like scenario number, call it number 10, that's assuming that for the 18, 19 school year, 3.4%, but then every future year, just to the Act One base index?
Correct.
Okay.
And going back to, to that exercise of the .25 or .50, what I was able to draw from that is that if we're able to go to the, if we choose to use the exception, and that's to get ahead, so maybe in future years, we're not trying to make up so much revenue, but there's a baked-in, it's baked into those future budgets, there's more of a rising tide which provides that flexibility in revenue generation later. Is that a correct understanding?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so I, to that end, taking that to the end, our five-year projections, I assume, are dramatically better when we're, when we look at this exception, even if it's just this one year because it's baked in. Is that correct?
Yes, and that, that still includes the $125 million in full-day kindergarten, right. And any, any scenario you look at that includes 3.4% or 2.9%, anything above the index will make the ending fund balance certainly more attractive.
Thank you.
For clarity for the public, this is the first year we would be drawing from the Pension Reserve Fund?
That's correct. Now, we actually had planned use of the Pension Reserve Fund in this fiscal year. We're in the 2017, 18 fiscal year. So when the budget was passed last year, we were planning on pulling down from that fund. Our budget this year, our budget figure was a $4.5 million deficit. But based on our projections for the end of the fiscal year, we think we're going to come close to break even. So if we break even this year and our revenues match our expenditures, there really won't be a need to use any of the Piers Stabilization Fund in this fiscal year. So next year, if things go as budget, that will be the first year that we'll be drawing down the Piers Rate Stabilization Fund. And we have a plan that we share with the Finance Committee to actually draw down that stabilization fund in a steady manner over a seven-year period to kind of get us to the point where we're...
At the peak. Where we're at?
At the peak of the pension increase. Because the projections now indicate that the pension percent that the school district pays will rise to a peak of 40%, which means that we will pay 40 cents on every dollar of eligible salaries. And the bad news is, if that wasn't bad enough, once it reaches 40%, it'll stay there for about the next 20 years.
And it's also fair to say that both this year and last year, we benefited from positive economic indicators. We had great investment returns this year. We had insurance rates that were much lower than anticipated. Last year, we had a tax assessment settlement that brought $7 million in, you know, and while we're very fortunate that that happened, you know, we have to plan that that's not going to be the case every year, in my opinion. You know, we can't budget on the hope that we're going to have great investment returns every year, you know, that we are fortunate. This is, all economic indicators right now are suggesting that things are good, right? And I would rather try to make this move now than if there's a downturn and it hurt, and it's hurting everybody. So again, it's just where I'm, my thinking is at on this.
And I want to make sure also, and Mr. Fusco reminds me, to my fellow board members, directors, that, you know, what, what I took very seriously in the last finance meeting was Mr. Scrocky's report that there is no longer a margin of error. It seems like we've had the last three or four years where everything has broken our way, we've had some atypical revenue generation that we should not count on anymore. I believe it is a less than 1% variance we're counting on this, this upcoming budget?
That's right. Our variance is for the past four or five years, and that's the difference between what we budget and what the final number comes in. That variance, that difference continues to go down year after year after year, and that's because we've been fine-tuning the budget as much as possible. We've been less conservative in our revenue estimates. I mentioned last week for our revenues, for the first time, we are going to have the highest revenue that we're projecting in a number of years, in fact, forever, for the Realty Transfer Tax. That's going to be the highest budget figure we've ever used. For the Earned Income Tax, that's going to be the highest budget figure that we ever used. And we're really pushing the envelope to try to get the budget more and more accurate. But what that means then is that if we budget $260 million in revenue, don't expect us to bring in $270 million at the end of the year. Maybe if we have a good year, we bring in 261 or 262 million, but we can't expect to bring in $5 or $10 million extra. That variance continues to shrink year after year after year.
And also, credit to you and your team and the administration. We want to have it, you know, to keep whittling it down to be right on target, and thank you for that. That's not the problem. But what I see is a shift from how decisions and budgets have been made before, and rather reactive decisions for a variety of justifiable reasons. But now we, as a board, have to decide in our direction with a much more, a slimmer margin of error when it comes down to setting these rates. Are we willing to just go to Act One this year, not bake it in in the future when we are not going to get lucky every time? And that's why I want that manageable deficit and a healthier fund balance at 3.4%. We take it very seriously having to raise taxes at all. But, you know, this, I feel this is part of a corrective action to put this district on a much more stable... this is part of a corrective action to put this district on a much more stable and even stronger footing for years to come. This is not a year-by-year silo decision, and that's, I would implore anyone still deciding as to what rate we want to recommend, that you consider this. You know, we want to be strategic.
And I'll remind the board, the margin of error that we have on the expenditure side of the budget would be what's called our budgetary reserve. And that's one line item in the budget, and that's for unanticipated expenses that occur throughout the year. And that figures $1.5 million, which is a relatively small number considering we have a $260 million proposed budget on the table. We currently, this year, have $750,000 in the budgetary reserve. Next year, we're recommending $1.5 million. So that's the cushion that we have, if you will. It's unallocated for any particular purpose. That's the margin of error we have on the expenditure side, that budgetary reserve.
All right, I'm sorry to marathon. One more question, I can't find the number immediately, but for special education exceptions, because that's what, if we're going to use the 1%, it's based on the special education exception. You know, for the public's knowledge as well as my own, because I can't find the number, over the last two or three years, how many millions of dollars has it been that we haven't taken exceptions, which means we've paid for special education funding out of our general fund already? We have not taken advantage of that?
The district for the past three years was eligible for both the retirement exception and the special education exception. And basically, the way the special education exception works, it looks back in your historical spending over a two-year period, and if your spending exceeds the Act One index, then you're permitted that difference for an exception. So for the 2017, 18 year, for example, the current year that we're in now, now, we didn't apply for exceptions, but we did enter the information in our spreadsheets to determine what it would have been. A special education exception would have been just slightly under $2 million for the current year. In 1617, roughly $1.8 million. And in the 1516 year, it was $662,000. So in two of those three years, the district did apply to PDE for the exceptions, but the board elected not to use those exceptions, those particular years.
The decision on the exceptions, when it comes to PDE, that is looked at, though, correct in a vacuum based on one year of budget data. So if you take the exceptions in one year, presumably, you may not qualify in a future year because you've corrected the imbalance in an earlier year. Does that make sense?
That's possible, right. It's actually, it uses historical data, and it's interesting, I'm not quite sure why districts even need to apply for exceptions and why they need to be approved, because they pull information directly from our annual financial report. And it's just a simple formula that determines whether you're eligible or not, based on that historical data. It's not based on any future data, not based on any projections, it's based on actual data from a two-year period.
Okay, so what we need is some consensus on what budget we should be presenting to the public, then for a formal vote when we have our meeting next week. So is there some consensus on what that ought to be?
I'm at 3.4.
What was that?
She said
I'm at the 3.4, asking for the exception.
Are we going to do this like a roll call? Would that be, I mean, because I haven't heard, I haven't heard one argument against it at this point. It sounds to me like we're for 3.4. I'm listening for
I'm still not convinced on the, on taking the exception this year. I don't know if this year is the prudent year to do it. I still hold by what I said earlier, that I feel, I feel we do need to make a large investment in this district to get things on the right track, but I'm really not comfortable necessarily doing that this year when we don't have a plan in place. To the comment about NAP Elementary, we still have not decided on an architect yet. So for us to be talking about that, I still feel that it's early to do that. So I'm still at the 2.4.
I'm at 3.4. Clearly.
Anyone want to guess what I'm at? Yeah, 3.4.
2.4. At most.
I am willing to consider the 3.4 if we, as a board, and I recognize that the vast majority of us are new, if we hold ourselves to the strategic plan. I think that we have gone down the path of trying to articulate our priorities, but I do think that we've, that we've slowed a bit in being able to drive some things forward. And I do kind of second Jenna's concern that we, we talk a lot about plans, but are still trying to learn the process and how things, you know, how quickly things move. I did feel a great sense of relief at the last ECP committee where we were able to talk about and introduce the idea of full-day kindergarten, and we were able to back into a date and then begin to look at what it would take to get to start at that date. And so I look at all of these wonderful things on the board and I, on the walls, and all of those investments are so worth the investment at the 3.4 level if we commit ourselves to not getting pulled into the weeds and holding ourselves to creating the goals and objectives that are outlined here, and that we work together on those issues.
Julian, Ms. Ramish, I have absolutely, I'm in total agreement with how we need to align strategy with real-world implementation. But I think, you know, from our nonprofit experience, we know that dollars equal mission. And in this sense, this process has certainly helped clarify for me more quickly what some of my priorities are in understanding that. But I'm absolutely open to working with the board, have consensus on all of our priorities being worked on together.
And I think we need to move from my priority to our priority and then making sure it's aligned with the administration and that, I mean, even with the, I think with strategic planning, there's so much value in the process itself, and we've even kind of stumbled a little bit on what the process should look like. And so, I want to be able to, for all of us to begin to move beyond that stumbling and getting pulled into things and really, really finding, finding our groove and focusing so that I feel comfortable with that 3.4.
Yeah, and I'd also like to request, if we could, for the next action meeting, if Mr. Fusco could give us an ECP report, because that's actually the first time I've heard that we have a date for full-day kindergarten. So I'd love to hear more about that before, because I think that'll help me with my decision as well.
So I think when you look at exceptions, they're written into the law to address extraordinary expenses in certain categories. So the exceptions were never intended to pad a fund balance. So I hear what everyone's saying about we've got need that's gone unaddressed here, so we certainly need to address that. And I think our budget has done that. I mean, we asked our administration to present a list to us of the positions that they felt they needed for next year, and they came back to us with a list after several weeks of multiple discussions at the central office and building level, and we funded every single position that they asked for. And we actually asked for a list of potential positions that maybe we could live without here, and we, a list was forthcoming, and we opted not to cut any of those positions out of the budget. So we've cut no positions, and we've added every position that we've been asked to fund. So I guess my question is, and I also hear the concern about, you know, not banking on the fact that we're going to come in ahead of budget every year. So if we take the exceptions, and that's the desire of the majority of the board, then at the end of the year, if in fact we have a surplus, can we give that back to the community? So if we run next year, $2.5 million ahead of budget, can we, can we pay that back? And that addresses, Mr. Casa, your concern that we need to protect the fund balance, you don't want to drain the fund balance if we have a tough year. And it also sticks true to the meaning of what the exceptions were intended to do, is to address short-term, higher-than-necessary or higher-than-usual expenses in one category. So if we're going to, if we're going to seek exceptions as a board, then if we, at the end of the year, don't need that money, can we give it back? So this year, in our district, some of the trends, and Mr. Fusco and Mr. Casa have accurately pointed out some trends, but we also have other trends. We have declining student enrollment. We have hundreds less students projected for next year than we do this year, and we have lower enrollment this year as compared to last year. So our student enrollment is going down, we're educating less kids. Our medical and prescription insurance is down $2.1 million for next year. When do you ever hear about prescription and medical costs going down? But ours, our costs are down 8.95% heading into next year. So we've saved $2.1 million in healthcare costs, we've got fewer students. For the next school year, we're seeing the smallest increase in PISers that we've seen since Act One went into place back in 2006. Our workers' compensation premiums are down $340,000 over last year. We have a lot of good trends. As Mr. Fusco pointed out, our interest earnings are over, I believe I'm correct, Mr. Scrocky, over 200% higher than they were the prior year. So we've had a lot of good budget developments this year. In the current year, the screen last year, we were projecting a 4.8 or 4.9 million dollar deficit, and we were going to have to tap into our fund balance to cover that deficit. We're ending up with, we're going to be adding more money to our fund balance next year. We are roughly 500 or $5 million ahead of budget. We're going to be adding money to our fund balance. So if we need the exceptions for the reasons that they were intended to be needed for, then that's one argument. But every year, we continue to add money to the fund balance. We have $41 million in the bank. I just think we need to balance the increase. So we certainly have needs here, we have to address them. I agree with what everyone was saying about priorities. When you look around the room, a lot of these things on the walls, we do need to do, but I think we need to balance that. So there needs to be a balance in going from, you know, no tax increase or a tax decrease to taxing to the maximum extent permitted by law. I just think, as a board, we need to find the balance, because we represent a very diverse community. We represent individuals that have kids in schools, individuals that don't have kids in schools, renters, homeowners, senior citizens, young people. And so, as a board, we represent that entire community, and so I think we just need to find the balance. So whether we need to tax to the absolute maximum permitted by law, I'm not convinced, given what I've seen in terms of the trends this year. I do agree that there's a lot on the horizon, we're going to have to, you know, find a way to pay for that, and we've always been successful in doing that. We always have a building under renovation, Montgomery Elementary, we just completed, that was over a $20 million project. Before that project, Inglewood was under construction, Hatfield Elementary was under construction, the board has plans to go to NAP. We renovate our buildings, we do all of those things. So, and our fund balance goes up every single year, and we find financially sound ways to borrow that money. We use the wraparound structure, we take advantage of good interest rates when we can. We've done all those things historically as a board, and I just think we need to find balance. And that's the only thing that I ask all the board members to consider, is where does that balance lie? And it's probably different for each member, but one thing I continue to come back to is the exceptions were not meant to pad a fund balance. So if next year, if the scenario on the screen holds true and we truly are in a deficit situation, then that's one thing. But if we're sitting here in a year and we're being told by our business office that we're going to be adding yet more money to our fund balance, are we agreeing as a board, and can we agree as a board, that in that case, the exceptions weren't needed, let's give it back to our community? And let's, let's put the money back in the hands of the individuals? What are the thoughts on that? We have one of the highest fund balances in the state. We have probably, some would argue our fund balance is too high. The Auditor General's been out looking at school districts that carry too high of a fund balance and has made findings that the level of fund balance is inappropriate. So I think we need to balance that.
Clarify that, not for us.
Not for us, correct, but we have, we have a high, we have a very high fund balance.
We have a very large district, too.
Correct.
Okay.
You're right, absolutely.
But we also have a planned drawdown on that balance, so, I mean, we're kind of at a high watermark with it at this point.
Well, that's for the, that's for the PISers funding, which we, which we have to spend.
But it's all part of the reserve.
Sure, I guess my point goes to the fact that the unassigned fund balance is what has been increasing year over year.
So, Mr. Scrocky, is that a viable option? Has that occurred before where if there is a, what would you call that, a bonus or a surplus?
Sure.
That, that has been redistributed in a sense to the taxpayers?
I think what the board would have to do in that scenario is consider lowering the taxes by a lower amount, a lesser amount in the 1920 year. I don't envision us doing 25,000 refund checks, ranging from, you know, $2 to $20, but we could, you know, the board could certainly consider lowering the millage to a figure that would represent any addition to the fund balance. That certainly can be done.
Well, Vice President D'Azia, I think it's a, could be a creative compromise, and I think if it gets us towards, closer to consensus and not a split board, I'd be open to exploring that further. So thank you for bringing that up. I do want to make sure, though, that I feel, at least in speaking with, my understanding is that for special education, even with the addition, I've heard members, colleagues on the board say already that this is just getting us to where we need to go. So I don't feel in any way we're padding the fund balance with the exception. I believe it's truly applicable in this situation. My hope is to never use an exception, but this, it's why they call an exception, this is one of them, and I think if not now, when?
Yeah, I echo that sentiment. I think when you look at the fact that we have to pull from the general fund to support special education, the fact that Pennsylvania, not exactly a very liberal state, looked at our balance and said, yes, this is appropriate, I think that the idea that we're simply doing this to pad fund balances is mischaracterizing it a little bit. You know, yes, there are priorities, but I think the general point was, if we're not properly funding our special ed, then we have to pull from that general fund, and it prevents us from doing some of these other things, so.
Well, I think, too, the other thing to consider there is we can make that argument year over year, then.
Because we structurally don't have enough money to pay for special ed every year.
The reality is, yes, with the state funding, we don't. But, so does that mean we're going to take an exception year over year? I mean, I think that's something that I'm concerned with. We are setting this precedent right now without sitting back and really understanding our strategic plan, knowing what timelines are going to be there, what the actual expenses are for certain things, for us to say that we're just, we're going to take it this year. I would be more comfortable seeing where we're at next year and when we have a plan in place.
Just as a point of procedure, Mr. Scrocky, we need to give you consensus on one option so that then that can be put to the public and then it would go to vote at the next action meeting?
That's correct. And keep in mind, we would need, there are seven board members present tonight. So for the vote next Thursday, we need not a majority of the board, but five affirmative votes on the proposed final budget. So my scorecard tonight, I have four individuals, four board members that indicated an increase of 3.4% and three that indicated an increase of 2.4%. So we have two board members not present this evening. But for next week's vote, it would need to be five affirmative votes for the proposed final budget. And we do need to take one, one budget for the community, cannot have multiple proposed final budgets.
And just so everyone's clear, Mr. D'Azia's comments were, I think, you know, understood is that, I don't think Mr. D'Azia was saying that we would be knowingly padding the budget, because it does indicate that we have a remaining deficit of $2.9 million, even with a 3.4%. I think what Mr. D'Azia was saying was, let's see how it all turns out, because there are some things that are very difficult to be able to predict. But I just want everybody to understand that this would not be doing and knowing, because it does still show a deficit of $2.9 million. So I think the suggestion I'd like to make is that we do bring a budget forward next week that does indicate at that juncture, a tax increase of 3.4%. And then we get some additional direction that evening, and then, of course, in the final budget, which is adopted in June, the board still has the prerogative to make any adjustments they choose. And as Mr. Scrocky said, generally, between the time of the budget that's passed in May and the one that's passed in June, generally, the direction, if there is any direction to change, it would be downward in terms of the magnitude of the tax increase, not upward. So I think we should start with 3.4% next week, see where that goes in that vote next week. I did hear Mrs. Stoll indicate at the finance meeting that she was arguing at that juncture, at least, to go to use exceptions. I don't know how she feels tonight, she's not able to attend, but I do recall her comments very clearly last week at the finance meeting. So given all of that her comments very clearly last week at a, at the finance meeting. So given all of that, I would recommend we do bring a three point four percent forward next week, and then get some direction next week. And then between next week and the final budget adoption in June, we, you know, solicit additional direction in terms of where the board would like to ultimately end up in, in that final budget in June. Do we have consensus in that? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. That concludes the planned items. I think we have public comment.
One other thing I'll note, I don't know if it's in everybody's packet, but I have the MCIU nominee, candidate nomination form here. Does everyone have that in their packet? So we need to, we need to make sure, Mr. Scrocky, we get this on the agenda for next week?
Yes, that is planned for next week.
Okay. And it looks like, is that for a three-year term?
North Penn's term is two years.
It's a two-year term.
Yes.
All right. And just so we know, Mrs. Ramich, are you willing to continue to serve in that capacity?
I am. And I was appointed to fill your role, your position on the board. And then at the first meeting that I attended, they altered the term of service and brought North Penn to an earlier need to renominate a staff person to create more of a balance so that they, they were having larger numbers of people rotating off the MCIU board. And so this, this new structure brings things a little bit more into balance.
Great. So if there's no objection from the board, I would just ask that the agenda reflect the nomination of Mrs. Ramich for the term. Is there, does anybody have any objection to that? Okay, so we'll, we'll place that on the agenda. Thank you. All right. With that, that concludes our new business. And at this time on the agenda, it's time for our Audience of Citizens. So if there are any members that wish to address the board, you can step forward, state your name and address. Please make sure you sign in on the Audience of Citizens logbook, and we'll ask, given the late hour, if each speaker can try to limit their comments to about three minutes. Thank you.
I'm speaking to the board again. My name is William Patchell. I live at four oh four Bonnie Lane, Lansdale, Pennsylvania. I've lived here about twenty-eight years. You know, I've seen a lot of changes. One thing I have to keep telling you is that you will all pay a federal income tax. You will get no refund because you're in uncharted waters with the federal tax code. You get ten thousand dollars maximum. I'm sure you people that are making pretty good salaries, I hope you get a tax bill from the federal government and you pay quarterly. I wanna see how generous you are. Oh, I had to write a check for twenty-nine hundred dollars every quarter now. You don't have any money. All that money that you used to take vacations and drive expensive cars, live a lavish lifestyle, you can forget about that. Because all the tax money is now going to the upper, I believe it's point two five percent. If you, if you're making a couple billion dollars a year, you're probably looking pretty good right now. But for the vast majority of people that are making the wheels of commerce and industry roll along, you're gonna live a miserable life. And I'll tell you, just like I said, I guarantee you, I'll send you a postcard from Ocala. And when I'm living down there, I'm not gonna pay any income tax because this tax package was a stimulus package. If you got a business, you're moving to Texas. If you're retiring out of this state, New York, Connecticut, any of these high-tax state, you can't get a U-Haul because everybody's getting ready to get out of there. And that's where you move to Florida. And you're gonna keep their houses. I'm not sending you any customers. I can still deduct it on my federal income tax. It's gonna be a very, very slow time in the North Penn School District. I don't, that declining stool population, that is going to accelerate. Number one, the millennials, they can't afford, oh, I'll get my, my college loans done when I'm about thirty years old. And kids, nah, we're getting a dog. There's no incentive to move here anymore because no one can afford to move here anymore. I know what's gonna happen. Why aren't there any sales in houses? There's no inventory because there's no reason to sell. Why would I sell my house? It's going up five to seven percent per year. You couldn't replicate my house for three hundred fifty thousand, not counting the land. So I don't know what you're planning on doing. I know what I'm doing. I'll send you a postcard from Ocala. Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. I assume you'll yield back your thirty-six seconds?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll bank it for, we'll bank it for next month.
I don't see any of that stuff. I figured it all in.
Anybody else wishing to speak to the board this evening?
Yeah, I'd like to speak. Hi, my name is Steve Lynn. I live at eight oh nine Sullivan Drive in Lansdale. Mr. Costa might remember me because around this time last year, I sat next to him, and I asked the same question that Susan Leonard did, why not two point five percent rather than one point nine nine? Because at that time, I thought that one point nine nine wasn't enough based on the deficit. This year, I'm gonna ask the other question. Why isn't two point four percent enough? Okay? When I look at those numbers, I think that's enough. And now, one clarification I'd like from Mr. Scrocky is on a previous slide, I saw that there was a pension because of the retirements this year. There was like a one point seven million dollar, and it showed the four point seven deficit, subtract the one point seven from the retirement, and that left a deficit of just under three million. So can you clarify that, please?
Certainly. Good question. The one point seven million dollars is fund balance. That's what we call our Retirement Stabilization Fund. So that is money that's been committed by the board to be used for additional pension increases. So don't be misled, that is still fund balance. It's just different classification of fund balance. But you are correct that once you apply that one point seven million dollars, the deficit remains slightly under three million.
Okay. So, all right. All right. The other comment I wanted to make was about all-day kindergarten. Because that came up several times, and I almost assumed like that was a given. And I just wanna say, before we get on that bus, I think we have to ask the question, how many first-grade teachers are saying that the kids coming into their class are not prepared for first grade? I think we have to ask that question. Okay? And if it is a majority, if there's a lot of first-grade teachers saying that the kids coming in the first grade are not prepared, then we have to ask the question, is there anything we can do in our current kindergarten program, which is half-day, that could rectify that? Because maybe that's a solution. Maybe there has to be, you know, curriculum changes to make that half-day kindergarten work. Okay? After you ask those questions, then you can start, you know, maybe thinking about it. But you, you have to start somewhere. You can't just say that all-day kindergarten's a given and, and let's just go with that. You really have to prove that it's necessary. And then you can even look at, you, you can look, I'm sure there's been studies, people have probably looked into this and compared half-day versus full-day. And is there really any long-term benefit to it? Is it, is it a couple-year marginal increase, and then they're back to the same as the kids that went to half-day? So I really think you have to look at a lot of different things before you get on that all-day kindergarten bus. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
I would encourage you to come to the ECP Committee, where we've gone, gone through the pilots that have been run and the studies, the facilities utilization, and the process that is going through that to answer and address those exact questions. How, what kind of benefit is it? What kind of benefit are we seeing through the pilot? That would be a great venue for you to, for where that's happening right now. So, thank you. The next meeting is Thursday, the twenty, twenty-fourth, May twenty-fourth, six thirty.
And I think probably on the kindergarten, at some point soon, we probably ought to do that, we, we ought to have a work session meeting to update the full board on where we are.
I'm sure, yeah, we can certainly do that. I'm sure Chris will address it in his report at the meeting next month. What we had was some conversation about if there's a preferred target implementation date. We backed off of that, when we need to bring a plan to, a fully fleshed-out plan to a work session, and then to the full board for a vote. So it's not that we're saying anything is a totally done deal at this point. What we worked off of was, what's the timeline look like if you're shooting for a particular date? But it absolutely has to come to the full board first.
And will that, I don't wanna get too far off track, but will that include any of the discussions that we've had about a possible redistricting? Have we gotten that far yet?
We are going to, at the May meeting on the twenty-fourth, Dr. Santoro and Mr. Kennedy are going to be discussing the remuneration study of the elementary schools that they recently completed, and what their recommendations would be in terms of space available in each of the buildings. That was a piece that we felt needed to be done to ensure that we have space available before we move too far down this road.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Any other comment this evening?
Hi, my name is Sabrina Charlo. I live on State, excuse me, State Street in Lansdale. It was brought to my attention that there was a video being shown at one of the elementary schools, and I'm a little concerned about the video. I'd like to play a little bit for you right now.
So if I do waste time, and I can, and I take time, and I leave, you'll saw me right here.
You, girl. You finished your morning work?
I just.
You're about the laziest negro this side of the river. You're gonna take care of the smokehouse, too, today, since Henry can't do it. You're gonna put some damp green wood on the fire, and then chop some more wood for tomorrow. And here's the key for the door. Make sure you lock it up when you're done. Don't want no slaves stealing meat.
So, excuse me. To me, this video is, or this assignment or game is completely unacceptable. I certainly would never want my daughter to participate in an assignment like this. I think if you are gonna be passing this assignment around to parents, there should be a permission slip. I'm getting a permission slip to talk about puberty with my child. The language that you're using in here, to me, if I wanna teach that to my child, I think that should be up to me. I think that it also said, excuse me, sends a mixed message about slavery. It's kinda like making it into a game, is what it seems like to me. You're being, you're, they're saying that you can, if you follow the instructions, you can escape freedom. I don't think that that's an accurate site on real slavery. And I just wanna make sure that this, you know, how we can get this out of the school system and not be shown. And that was it.
Ma'am, did you sign the register? Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I'll, I'll just point to the fact, our communications office has issued a statement on this matter. It was issued last week, Dr. D.
It was, yes.
And, and so.
I can summarize that for you if you'd like.
Please.
The North Penn School District did recently become aware of a website that was being used in, in two fifth-grade classrooms that happened to be at NAP Elementary, that did raise concerns among parents. And that website, Mission US, more specifically the game Flight to Freedom, had been used for several years without issue. However, more recently, concerns about those content did emerge. And just for a little more background, that Flight to Freedom is a simulation for students to learn about the difficulties encountered by slaves as they tried to escape the South. And it's part of a website called Mission US that offers a variety of simulation games set in different eras of United States history. It is a free website, and it's funded by various educational institutions, including the Corporation for Public Broadcasting, the National Endowment for the Humanities, and the United States Department of Education's Institute for Education Sciences. The website is used by educational institutions across the country in combination with classrooms' discussions surrounding the issues that are being addressed. However, after learning that parents have expressed objection to some of the content in Flight to Freedom, it is no longer being used in North Penn schools. Other resources that do not involve simulation games will be used in the classroom when learning about historical and cultural events. So I can assure you that it's not being used, and it will not be used. You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody else wishing to speak to the board this evening?
My name is Tilly Lofton. I live at twenty fifty-eight Maple Avenue in Hatfield. I do not have any children in Hatfield, my husband and I, but I pay taxes. And education to me is the great leveller. I wanna cry, you know? As a proud black American, I was in Washington, marching with Black Lives Matter and the Women's March in January. And the thing that we had in common was education. Now, granted, when you, when you have that video or that, that snippet from the simulation, it is incendiary, and it's prolific, and it takes you back four hundred years, and it makes you angry if it's taken out of context, which this one was. I, I love James Baldwin. I, I love the fact that he spoke to things like this. In order for us to move forward, we have to know our history. And from my understanding of the simulation, it places not only black children, but all children in that role to give them understanding and have those courageous conversations on bias. Did you know there's one hundred and fifty different types of unconscious bias? Did you know that? That's through education. So I understand why you took it out. I, from my own opinion, and again, I'm, I'm from New Jersey originally, so forgive me. I'm opinionated. Sorry, not sorry. But when you take education out of the equation, and you add censorship, and you do a knee-jerk reaction, it sets us back. And that's all I'm going to say. I, I hope that if it's not this, what's the alternative? I've seen the textbooks that the North Penn District has on social studies, history, and more importantly, black Americans. And some of them are even sanctioned in saying that they were happy slaves. Last time I checked, we weren't happy. And the masters weren't working with us in the fields. So what's, is that the alternative to this? It's not just putting black children on the spot. It's giving empathy. It's giving understanding, and it's having those courageous conversations on race. And that's all. Forgive me if I sound passionate, but I'm passionate about education, diversity, inclusion. I've had several conversations with school board leaders on that. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else wishing to speak to the board? Please.
Good evening. My name is Shatora Nichols. I live at five zero five Carroll Court, Lansdale. And my issue with the video, I understand the whole inclusion. I think our district does not do enough for inclusion of all students. We need a diversity and inclusion council that will address issues like this. We need to hire more of different cultures and different backgrounds, staff members and teachers, so that we are not dealing with an issue where we have our children being exposed to something that us as parents know nothing about. Like the one woman just said, if my son came home with a note about a puberty video he had to watch, I would have to sign it. I have gone to view videos that my son has had to watch prior to him even seeing it. So why was this not addressed to the parents first, prior to being exposed to the children? I also went on the website and checked out the video. The video is, is specifically made to be viewed by middle school and high school students. The children that viewed this were in elementary school. So to me, that does not seem appropriate at any level. I think that we need to go deeper. We need to make sure our staff members, we need to make sure that our parents and everybody is on the same page and are all in the know of what is going on with our students. There is no reason why we don't have some sort of system in place to where we know what's going on with our children. This is absolutely absurd. This is the year two thousand eighteen. And like the other woman that was just speaking said, slavery was not a game. You didn't get a choice to make a decision. I think that this would be something completely inappropriate to show my child at an elementary level, and I'm glad that it is now taken out of North Penn School District. But then what are you going to use in place of educating my children, along with other race children, about slavery in an appropriate, age-appropriate manner? Because I don't feel that that's appropriate, but I also don't feel like sugarcoating it is either. So what do you, as the superintendent of our district, have in place to make sure that this doesn't happen, and to also replace it with something that's gonna be more effective for our children?
Yeah, we were, the teacher that was using this for a number of years was working really closely with the Anti-Defamation League, and they did make some suggestions that that teacher found to be very worthwhile. And she's very comfortable with being able to implement those. So we can, I can certainly talk to you in more detail about the specifics of that. I don't have those specifics. I don't have those specifics, but I was assured by the individuals involved that there's some very excellent suggestions that were made. They're not simulations, but they are good resources to be able to use.
Okay, thank you. I'd definitely like to speak with you about those.
Sure.
Thank you for your comment.
Ms. Nichols, could you, I'm sorry, could you please sign the register? Oh, thank you.
Anybody else in the back?
Hello, everyone. My name is Kelly Albertson Madden, and I am a teacher at Napp Elementary School. I am a 5th grade teacher at Napp Elementary School. I've been teaching for 17 years. I've been teaching 5th grade for 14 years. I'm a member of the Cultural Cadre. I have been for eight years. I'm on the Social Studies Curriculum Committee. I'm on the North Penn Education Association Executive Council Committee, known as CAPS, who provided you guys with the books today. And more recently, over the last past two weeks, I've been known as the black teacher. Haven't had a name, I'm just known as the black teacher. And I, I've been known that as, by people who, for all intents purposes, have no educational background on my, my intent to teach. I feel like I have been both professionally and personally attacked and slandered all over Facebook due to this issue. I'm basically here because I wanna speak about the fact that my educational philosophy was personally attacked, yet the people who had the issue about this have not had any courageous conversations to, with me. Nobody has asked me about my opinion, nobody has asked me about why I teach what I teach, how I teach what I teach, and why I'm passionate about teaching the way that I teach and what I teach. And so, basically, one of the ladies who spoke earlier was correct. Our social studies textbook is filled with inaccuracies. For example, one of the inaccuracies that's in our textbook right now is it says that slaves are immigrants. What? No, they, they didn't have a choice to come here. They were not immigrants. Another part, it says that many owners treated slaves, this is on page 471 in the 5th grade textbook, "Many owners treated slaves extremely well. Few beat or abused their slaves." Not true, that was not factual. Not to mention, another parent brought up the, the issue of language, vulgar language. However, specifically, on page 469 in the 5th grade textbook, it says, "The Negro slaves of the South are the happiest, and in some sense, the freest people in the world." Now, that is a point-of-view opinion, but that is on page 469 in the 5th grade textbook, so the word negro is used. So, basically, I'm just thinking that in addition to all of these things, the website being closed, which by the way, was sponsored by the, the Public Broadcasting, the U.S. Department of Education, I just feel like when you start banning censorship and censor, having censorship in schools, it leads to a snowball effect. When parents feel like they have the will to come into your classroom without speaking to you first, I just feel like that, that addresses a whole nother line of concerns. Once that occurs, which is what happened in this case, I feel like a small adjustment to the curriculum could lead to further demands. What's next? If I move on to this scholastic website that teaches about slavery, then someone is gonna be offended about that, because I'm teaching slavery. But that's in my curriculum. That's what I'm supposed to teach, and I'm not supposed to teach that slaves are immigrants. Another thing, the old adage, "You can't please everyone," certainly rings true in this case, because the snowball effect is a common censorship danger in schools. Not to mention that as a professional educator, as a respected professional educator, that I have been in, for almost 20 years, I feel like I should be able to have the freedom to uphold the standards of education, and I should also be able to prepare students for life in an open world, and a complex world at that. And if I front-load them with the knowledge and the information that is true, that is factual, and that what, what has happened, then I don't think that there's anything wrong with that. I feel like if people who don't really know the whole facts jump in, and then all of a sudden, they don't bother to inquire or ask the professionals about why they do what they do and how they do what they do, I think that that is, it runs the risk of closing minds and leaving children in the dark when it comes to various important social issues. So, I understand that the website was banned, I understand that the website is closed, I'm not in agreeance with it, and that is, and that is only because I feel like no one has asked me. No one has come to me. No one even knows my name, which is a little disheartening in this whole matter, because the teacher who first went to the, the teacher who first brought this up was me. I'm the teacher who, I've been doing this for almost 10 years in my classroom. I've been having cultural, courageous conversations with my students for over 10 years. And so I just feel like it's a bit of a betrayal, because no one has talked to me, no one has asked me, and no one has referred to me by my name. I am not the black teacher. I, I don't wanna be referred to as the black teacher. My name is Kelly Albertson, and I'm a respected member of this school and of this community, and I, and I'm proud of the way that I, that I teach, and I don't plan on changing it. As far as not teaching, going on the website, okay, I mean, I, I can't do that, but you are aware that it is a public website, and that students were made aware of it, students are excited by it because of the front-loading of the education that I do in my classroom. So I can't tell you that they're not gonna go on the website at home, because they have been, I, I have put the work in, I have put the efforts in. I have looked in this textbook, and I've been to all the places. I've been to Gori Island in Africa. I have done slideshow presentations. I go every summer to a slave plantation. I take pictures. I have documented and done my due diligence. And the fact that this is coming into play is a bit disheartening for me, even more so me being known as the black teacher. I'm more than just a black teacher. Thank you. I would do that now.
Kelly, thank you for your comments.
My name is Malik Smith, 1199 Columbia Avenue. Mrs. Albertson, I think initially that apology should be given to you, but it wasn't, just, just know that it wasn't the individuals that brought this to light, and to know that you were even a teacher that actually directed this information, or gave, that gave it out to the kids at the first time. That information was given by your, I won't say superior, but by people within your board, or within, that's on, that's at your school, that should, that shouldn't have even given that information, wherever it came from. Initially, when it came from the teacher, they brought it to my house, and I don't think it's any ill will on either of the teachers, they were just trying to actually teach the kids what they thought was right. But when you, when you talk about slavery, this is something that we, we have to discuss. And if you don't know your history, then it's gonna repeat it. But it's a way, at that age level, and at that, at that grade, it's a way to deliver that to, to our children. In the sense of me hearing it when my son played it to me, this is what I got out of it. You're right, we do have to learn about slavery. But it wasn't the fact of using negro. They went from negro, black, some people say the N-word, that we try to get people not to say, but it was the identity of the material when it says the N part, even though that wasn't the whole thing, but the N, if you listen to the last part, he said, uh, these, "I don't want any of these slaves stealing any of the meat." So as a black person, or white for that matter, at 10 years old, to identify, when you say slaves, that slaves in America was black. So when you, when you hear, "I don't want the slaves to steal, to steal my meat," a little white kid can say, "Oh, well, that means all slaves were thieves." So now I'm a black child, so now it's a fact of identifying myself, slaves are black, thieves are black, 'cause they stealing the meat. Now, as I grow older, and these kids get out there, and, and they're playing in the schoolyard, well, yeah, hey, you're blacks, so you're a thief. So now, now I've become a thief. It's not so much the saying the negro word that upset me, it was the fact of identifying in the correlation that slaves were thieves. So now, at 10 years old, every other kid is thinking, because you're black, you're a thief. Or you got some black kids say, "Well, is this the way I'm supposed to? Am I supposed to act like this? Am I supposed to become a thief? Am I supposed to take from people?" So it's the concept of the delivery that, that was being given to people, and I, I get it, you, you have to teach it. You have to teach slavery. But at 10 years old, there's a way you have to deliver it. And that's, that's the main part of being upset. I mean, taking it out the curriculum, I, I think, I think you guys made the right decision with that, you know? But does slavery has to be taught to our children? Yes, it has. It's a sensitive situation, it's a sensitive conversation that you could have, even as adults, it's hard. Have white, they say, "Oh, I got white friends, or I got that black friend." It's hard to even have that conversation as adults sometimes without getting into frictions or, or confrontations. I mean, I went to Gerard College, and, and I remember, I remember when they played Martin Luther King. And, and that's a diversity school, you know? At, at one point, it was all white males, and when I was there, you know, it was black and white, but now they have females there. But when they played that, and a group of us sat in the room, and we, and we watched that, it was so emotional, because we knew about certain things, but then when you, when you watch it, the, the tension just build up, that some, some guys couldn't understand it, some people didn't take it. So there was, at, at the end of, of watching it, where some, some blacks and whites, they got in fights with each other, 'cause they, they couldn't take it. Some black guys, you know, some of the guys there, they cried, they cried after watching that, you know? Roots the same ways. These are all sensitive, slavery is a sensitive area on both sides. But if you don't deliver it in the right manner, you can confuse the kids at that age, because they're not able to, to interpret it in, in a proper manner, where, where, where they can say, "All right, this is right, this is wrong." We teach our son, we teach our son about slavery and about life at, at home. So his, his development to where he's gonna become as a man, is gonna come from his father, it's gonna come from his mother, and it's gonna come from the school district. We've been in North Penn School District since 2002. Our daughter graduated from North Penn High. We left here in 2008, went to Florida. Florida was too hot, so we stayed there till 2011, came back. We came back because we enjoyed what our daughter was getting within the culture. Everybody say, "Oh, I've been doing this for this long, I've been a teacher for this long, I've been living in North Penn District for this long." But there's a reason why you're here. There's a reason why you're teaching from your heart. You wanna educate people. There's a reason why people wanna stay in your community, they, they like it, but if you, and it really shouldn't be a separation thing, because that's what it's becoming now. It's, it's not you, us against them, or, or teachers shouldn't be teachers against the parents. It's more or less should be an understanding where we as parents, and you as a teacher, and you as a board can come to, on, on common grounds, and, and, and come to a solution with everything. You know, when, when you, when you go back and forth, and you feel as though you gotta say, speak, speak, what was due to you, then you're only worried about yourself, you know? I mean, honestly, you, you are, you are due a, a apology. I never heard the, the black teacher thing, I mean, I knew your name, we didn't say it in our household, even a teacher that was passed to. I think what needs to happen is the curriculum that you guys put out there just need to be looked into further prior to passing it on to, to, to those kids. I don't think you meant any ill will, I don't even think the teacher, my son teacher meant any ill will. But the fact that it came into my house, I'm upset as a parent, because that type of language is explained through our household in a different manner. And like I said, it's not the whole negro comment to me, it was, it was the identity of how you make the, how kids make correlations. And the end of it, when he said, "I don't want any of the slaves stealing my meat." So that's identifying slaves as being black, so now I'm black, then I'm a thief. And, and that's, that's the part that really, that really got to me, and I, I'm really glad that you guys took it out, but any future thing of something like that, I agree with the first parent that came up here, that it should be brought to our attention first, prior to that. Anything that's, that's, that you think that may be sensitive or cause issues along the way should be, the parents should be notified of it.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else wishing to speak to the board?
Sorry, I get nervous speaking in front of groups, and I also would like one of these at my house, when my family's talking, so I can shut it off, 'cause they're pretty cool. I've been a long-term Napp parent for nine years now, and I will be there probably, I don't know, seven more years?
Ma'am, we, before you go, ma'am, we just need your name and address.
My name's Shannon Whiting, I live at 621 East Main Street in Lansdale. I do have a middle schooler over at Pendale, and I have two children that still attend Napp that are in 2nd and 1st grade, so I will be there a long time still. I've had the pleasure of knowing Kelly Albertson the entire time I've been at Napp, and I'm also the co-president of Home and School. I am stepping down next year, 'cause I finally have them all in full-time school. I just wanted to speak on her behalf of what a wonderful teacher she is, and what an asset she is to our school. Not only just as a teacher, but just as a person. She started after school clubs for our students on her own free time, teaching them about how to care for animals, and it grew so large, we had 60 kids wanting to participate. That's on her own time. She's not getting paid for that. As a school, as a Home and School member, we finally stepped up and gave them a budget, because it's not fair that these teachers are doing this on their own time. She's a wonderful teacher, and she is such an asset to that school. So I just wanted to come up and say that. I'm happy to sign it.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. My name is Rochelle Peterson Ansari, and this is probably a little unorthodox, because I am not a member of the North Penn community. I am a, I, I should say, I, I am a friend of the community. I've taught many of your teachers at a nearby college. I actually was made aware of the situation with the, the Mission U.S. simulation game, actually, some time ago, I've, I've seen it in the past. And then I was made aware of the broadcast on Channel 69. And I came out as a friend of both the teachers, the families, and, and the families. And I feel like whenever I'm in a space like this, I would do a disservice to all of us if I didn't share what, what I know. And what I didn't hear, well, I think the gentleman who just spoke kinda came close to what I wanted to share with you. What I didn't hear from everyone is, is the collateral damage that, that occurred because of some decisions that were made, and how they were, they were shared, okay? So, the response I had first was, there's a young lady, or there's a person, the black teacher, that, who, you know, keeps being mentioned throughout this, on Facebook, and on, on Channel 69, and people may not be realizing that that's creating a hostile work environment for her, okay? So I wanted to say that out loud, for people to hear that. And ask me any questions you need to, but, or not tonight, really consider that, right? That we were creating a hostile environment for someone who wasn't the person who showed, who used the game at the time. And we have to recognize that as well. My understanding is that person is in the room, the teacher's in the room, yes, okay, may identify as Caucasian or white, you may, yes. And so what happens in our society, we start doing things like scapegoating people, right? Not saying you all do it, but others do it, right? And so the school board, right, is, is called to a higher accountability. So we have to be very conscious of how you approach this situation and how you move forward. I implore you to listen to the people who are asking you to continue to talk about slavery, but check out that social studies book that says that slaves are workers. That's also highly inappropriate, right? And I do, I, you know, there's mixed feelings. There are people in this room who are saying, "Show it," and, and they are friends of mine. I happen to agree that everyone shouldn't show a simulation when, or use a simulation that involves things like slavery and the Holocaust. And because children are children, and their brains aren't developed, right, fully developed, so they're gonna go out, they're gonna do some things we would hope they wouldn't do if they don't have someone like, like Ms. Kelly, who scaffolds it properly for them. And you have a big job, there are a lot of teachers in the district, so I get it, right? You have to say, "Hold on, but let's say, hold on until further investigation." Because "hold on" said to other teachers that you're gonna censor them. You know that PDE and all the other powers that be are regulating what they do in their classroom, and that's why they, they lose their verve after a while, right? And then we still put our children in their hands. So I just implore you to think about all those nuances as you come up, I know you have to come up with quick decisions a lot of times, but always add, you know, "Let's stop for now until we further investigate," so that you can be inclusive, right? You don't have to know, get help, and remember, I understand, you've been working with people for eight years or more? I think you mentioned the Cultural Cadre, okay? the Cultural Cadre, okay? There shouldn't be a teacher who does have that kind of misstep if the work that you're putting in to build your cultural proficiency is working, okay? So, assess what you're bringing into your district as well. You know, I just love all kids. I don't want any child or any family, right, to be harmed by education. It's just not fair to any of us. Thank you. You want me to sign the paper? I don't live here.
Yes, please. I don't know. Did we get the address at the beginning?
What, my address? I don't live here.
I think we still need it for the record.
You still need it. 6344 Green Street, Philadelphia.
There you go. And if you could sign our log, that would be great. We'd appreciate it. And thank you for your comment. Anybody else wishing to speak to the board can come forward at this time?
Mr. Vice President, so I really just wanted to speak to, oh, okay. So, I want to speak. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but many of you may have, many of you may have recognized my face or may recognize my face. My son, so when I put this video on Facebook, you know, I need to bring awareness to what's going on in the school district. My son has been dealing with racial discrimination within the school district for the past two years. So, me putting the video on Facebook wasn't about Mrs. Albertson. The last time I had issues with the school district, nothing was ever done. My son had to go to a different school and pretty much I was told that the problems that my son was going through was his fault. This is a child that gets nothing but good grades, never had an issue with any teacher until last year. So, for my son to bring something home to me like that, it made my skin crawl when I heard it. So, I need to bring awareness to what is going on here. This problem needs to be fixed. Speaking to other African-American parents, they have the same issues, but we are the parents that come out and speak about it. This is a problem within the district. My son is 10. He shouldn't have to go through this. I brought him here tonight because I wanted him to speak, to let you guys know what he's been going through. This is a problem. Speaking to teachers, I have been told by other teachers, they see the discrimination. I have, just, I mean, I'm sorry, I don't do well in front of crowds, but I mean, just speaking to people within the district that work in the district. They know that this is going on and a lot of teachers turn a blind eye. They see nothing. And my kid is suffering the damages and I'm tired of it. Like, this problem needs to be fixed. The Black Comment came from someone you work with because I never knew, I never knew that the video came from you. I never even met Mrs. Albertson. So, the Black Comment, the Black Teacher Comment came from someone she works with. But to, I mean, I have got several phone calls, but no one, it's two people that I spoke to that did apologize for what my son went through. And one of the people that I spoke to, I would have thought that I would have got an apology about, you know, what my son went through. I didn't get that from that top person. Like, this is a problem. Like, who's going to fight for us? Nobody is fighting for us. And I'm tired of it. Something needs to be done about it. So, when I put it out there on Facebook, the last time when I brought the problem to everyone's attention, Cheryl Ann McHugh, she's typing now, which I think is rude, but she was the one that said that, you know, "The problems and issues that my son had probably was his fault." This is a problem. These are head people working and you can't even get no resolve with them. Betty Santoro, she passes the issues and the problems on. My son is a great kid and everybody that works with my son knows that my son is a great kid. He's never been an issue. And here it is, his life has been disrupted because now we have to take home, we live in a whole nother area for the school that we're zoned to. But this teacher, she still goes to work every day. She still holds her job. I had to have my son moved. The principal requested that my son was moved. I have to drive from the school every day, pick him up from school, which is not a problem. I'll do it for my child. But, I mean, the teacher still got her job. I mean, my son was afraid to go to school. He told me he thought the teacher was going to kill him. This is an issue. I mean, I don't know what more, I mean, I'm just so upset and my emotions flow and, you know, I'm a parent. I'm a parent first and I'm looking out for my child. So, and once again, I did speak to Mr. Devlin and I told him, "I know that he didn't give my son the game blank with any ill intentions, but my son brought it home." So, which may seem of one problem to all of you guys is many to me. So, this is an issue in this district. I mean, we need to have more teachers coming in that's of a diverse body for our students. I mean, our school district is coming more and more diverse. Where are all the Asian teachers, the Black teachers? Where are they at? I mean, come on. I know not only white teachers go to school and get degrees. So, I mean, where is the diversity for our student body? Something has to happen here. This is a problem. Like, these are the issues that we, I mean, you guys are talking about budgets and all of that. I don't know. I wasn't even listening, to tell you the truth, but you're talking about budgets and basketball fields. We need more teachers in this district. Maybe some teachers understand, but right now, I mean, it's too, my son, he's been through too much, too much, too much, to a point that my son, like I said, my son excels. I tried to put my son in private school and the teacher's put on his paperwork that he has a great sense of humor. Instead of talking about how he excels in academics, all this, I still have the paperwork. All you guys could put that he has a great sense of humor, like he's a joke in the classroom. But these teachers still have their job. This is a problem. Some people need to start getting fired.
Thank you for your comment. And with that, is there any more public comment this evening?
I do want to thank all the parents who spoke this evening and thank also the teachers spoke. I had extensive conversations with the teacher and with some of the parents, but I do look forward to additional conversation with other parents. I know it's a late hour. I certainly will stay after the meeting. We can make some contact after the meeting. And then also, don't hesitate to give me a call then. If it's too late, you can't really stay any longer. But I definitely will be here after the meeting for those who can. So, thank you, everyone.
All right. And ma'am, did you sign the Audience of Citizens logbook?
Yeah, we need that too.
And if you could state your name and address. I'm not sure that we got it at the beginning.
Appreciate it very much.
Shanika Tan, 1199 Columbia Avenue, Lansdale.
Just so everyone's clear, again, this simulation is not in our curriculum. We did have two teachers that were using it.
And I just want to make something clear on that too. There weren't many people, many parents complaining. I was the only person that complained. The phone calls you got was the outpour from the public. So, there wasn't, no teachers complaining about this, but me. So, that's inaccurate. I know you put that, you guys put that statement out, but that's inaccurate.
You can continue, Dr. [inaudible].
Thank you.
All right. And with that, as I mentioned at the outset, we have a statement on behalf of the district regarding this matter. And it doesn't appear that anybody else wishes to speak before the board. Is there a motion to adjourn? Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion, meeting's adjourned.